A little later, I'll just get everyone else up on the screen if we can. And then we'll get ready to make a move. Alright, I think that should be just about it. I'll allow, um, I'll leave a bit of time for the... Yeah, we're ready to go live. Good evening everyone and welcome to our Latrobe City Council Ordinary Council meeting. Um, glad to have you joining us online this evening. Uh, this is our regular ordinary council meeting and I'm joined this evening um by our councillors and our exec team. Um, I welcome Deputy Mayor Dan Clancy, Councillor Melissa Ferguson, Councillor Sharon Gibson, Councillor Val Harriman, Councillor Brad Law, Councillor Tracy Lund, Councillor Graham Middlemiss will join us shortly. And Councillor Darren Howe is with us as well and also we send a warm welcome to our CEO Stephen Piercenti. And we also have our exec uh team joining us, our general managers who at any points of clarification we require out of the delegation of the CEO may answer some questions. And uh we also have of course our governance and tech crew who are ensuring that we can conduct this online meeting this evening. And I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting here today, most of us are on the traditional lands of the Brackong people, the Gunakurno nation, and I pay my respects to the elders, past, present and those emerging. Also like to acknowledge any elders who are joining with us this evening and I would also like to welcome them. Uh, just the usual uh reminders, we conduct these meetings on the basis of our governance rules. And if the councillors could just um ensure that they can be seen and heard uh throughout the meeting, that will make it uh easier for everyone. Uh, we'll use the electronic hands as much as possible, but if that's not working for you on your device, then just hands close up to the screen will ensure that that makes it a little easier for us as well. Um, I'm not aware of any apologies or leave of absence. I do note councillor Middlemiss, uh he was with us, he's uh briefly dropped out and will be with us again. He's asked us to go ahead in his absence, but he will be here shortly. Uh, next item on the agenda is item three. This is the adoption of the minutes commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion councillors? Councillor Gibson, do I have a second? A councillor Lund? Take it there's no opposition to those councillors. Oh, that basis, no position, no discussion, we'll carry that one unanimously. Thank you councillors. And now move into declarations of interest. Could councillors please declare any conflicts of interest, matters of interest or anything else that would like to declare uh on matters that are being heard tonight? Anyone councillors? Councillor Clancy?
Uh, thanks Madam Mayor. Uh, I've got a general interest of conflict at twelve point three um and notified the CEO through the week in writing uh of that as well. So I'll uh step out of the virtual meeting at twelve three. Thank you.
Thanks so much Jen, we'll pop you into the waiting room at that point. Thank you so much. Uh, next on tonight's agenda would be item five. This is our public participation. Uh, this is where we would uh regularly hear from community members and opportunity for questions to be put uh and public speaking opportunities. We have no questions and no public speakers for tonight's meeting, which brings us straight into item six being our strategic items for decision. Uh, we have seven items in this uh section of the agenda. The first up is uh six point one. This is the community grants and sponsorship governance policy review. It commences on page seven of our agenda. Uh, do I have a motion councillors? Councillor Gibson, do I have a second? Uh councillor Howe? Do I have any opposition councillors? There's no opposition there that I can see. Councillor Gibson, back to you if you'd like to speak to this one.
Look, just really quickly, Madam Mayor. The, the grants are always a hot, a hot item and you have to have some governance rules around them. So this is all this is, it's the governance rules for grants, so it's not a free for all. Simple as that.
Thank you very much councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe?
Oh, just very, also very briefly, Madam Mayor, um this was, this is replacing Apollo or updating a policy that we did adopt in two thousand seventeen. Uh, we are undertaking a review due to uh the Victorian Order of the General Officers Report uh that was in the fraud and corruption in council community grant programs. Uh, also we are moving to single council wards at the next um local government election, so we do need a change in our processes. There's only um half a dozen changes, but what it will make it is a um, it'll make it more streamlined, more transparent and and have greater government. So there are all changes there that I'm, I'm happy to support. Thanks Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much councillor Howe. Uh, were there any other councillors who wish to speak? No, we haven't had opposition, so there isn't the opportunity to close, but we have had speakers, so we will put uh the item to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself, that one is carried unanimously with the councillors present. Moving on to six two, this is the annual maintenance grants program policy commencing on page thirty seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion councillor Gibson? Moving.
Moving, thank you Madam Mayor.
Councillor Howe? Seconding councillor Howe, correct. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition on this one. Councillor Gibson, back to you.
Thanks Madam Mayor. Look, when the, the review was done, there was some um differences found with different organ, um committees. And some of it was about water. Who pays, who doesn't? So there, there had to be a, a policy to put everyone in line so it was fair. So that's all this is. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe?
Uh, just briefly also, um, this is one of a, this is a terrific policy that Latrobe City Council has. Um, it benefit both of the council and for the, the user groups of the facilities. So what we do is provide the managing committees um with funds to upkeep the facilities and also improve them as they see appropriate. Um, as um councillor Gibson said, the main change is, is the water usage, which was, uh, some was being paid by council, some was being paid by the uh users. So um, what we're proposing is option four, which is the um, which is the one the officers are recommending, which means that for the next twelve months will remain as the status quo. While we look at um water saving options for each of the um facilities, um and then move to option three, which um, which means it will be, the bill, uh, the council will be taking over the um billing, but then we'll on charge them. Um, but hopefully it'll allow a rate because we'll have the, by then we'll have the um, the water saving devices in these, in these facilities. Um, what it gives is, what it does is give us twelve months to be able to see what we can do to drop the water usage um and also look for um, what um, different funds and different um grants that we can use to help fund the changes. So happy, again, happy to, to support these um, this motion. Thanks Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Any other councillor wish to speak to this one? There are no other speakers. We haven't had any opposition, so there's no opportunity to close. We have had speakers, we'll put it to a vote. Those in favour councillors? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself, that one is also carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Councillor, moving on to six three, it's Latrobe submission to the independent review on Commonwealth disaster funding. Note here councillor Gibson commencing on page seventy nine of the agenda. Uh, councillor Gibson, I noted you, moving. Have a second?
Yes, please.
Thanks. Have a second to councillors? Councillor Clancy? Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, back to you.
Uh, thanks Madam Mayor. Look, we have put a submission in, as you know, we, we have our fair share of disasters and to actually apply for the funding from either the state or the feds, you've got to put in um documentation for that. Now, I, I, I do like the um, the submission that the officers have put in because when you're actually involved in um a disaster, it doesn't go overnight. And it, it lasts a hell of a long time. There's some, we're still working on from the um the flood, um the flood and the, sorry, um, I'm full of the flu, sorry. Um, but it wa, the flood we had in Turelgan, but we had the, the storm damage out in the, the Jerralangs. Now, we're still dealing with some of that. So while if we only had one small um incident, it wouldn't be a problem, but we have many. So you know, it is really hard for the officers to actually put the, the right submission in because it doesn't cover that. So I, I do like that what they've done and brought all of that up, but I would ask a question, please Madam Mayor. In with that, um, out at the um Jerralang area, there's a, a bridge that people, everybody was denying it was their responsibility. Do we know, has that been fixed yet, please?
Uh, Mister, welcome. Councillor Graham is joining us now and um connect him in and let's wait for that to get set up before we continue.
I don't know who's talking.
No one at the moment Graham?
That explains it, uh, that the audio is actually working.
It is. I'm just making sure you can see and hear us before I continue.
Okay, fine, thanks.
Great, okay. We'll continue on. Uh, councillor Gibson had a question for the CEO, just firstly, councillors do have the opportunity to ask questions. Uh, the nature of questions are to provide clarification uh regarding any information that they don't have available. Uh, Mister CEO, has this simple question been answered previously?
Um, I think there uh may have been some prior correspondence that was circulated to the landowners related to this matter. I think the short answer to councillor Gibson's question is that uh nothing has changed since we've provided that last vote. So if the matter hasn't been resolved, I think is the answer to the question.
Oh, okay. Subsequent question to that then please, Madam Mayor. Um, who will take responsibility to ensure that that's actually um finalised?
Councillor Gibson, I think questions have to be relevant to the matter.
It is relevant to that because it's, we're putting a submission in.
Not in relation to that specific item, I don't believe.
It's disaster funding.
Councillor Gibson, it relates to a specific matter and answers already have been provided to all of the councillors from the CEO and the CEOs responded to that question. And you have
Now, it was to the landholders, not us.
Councillor Gibson, I'll give you the opportunity to speak, but the nature of the conduct of the meeting is I won't allow council questions to draw officers into debate over matters that don't relate specifically to the item that we're considering. So I'm happy to take consideration of the council for an adjournment so that you can go and check your records in relation to the questions already provided. Um, but other than that, we'll continue on. Did you want to take an adjournment councillor?
Um, I, I want clarification because our CEO just said it was to the landholders, not us.
Mister CEO, has information been provided to the councillors? I believe the councillors will see feed in, but can you confirm that?
Just Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, just to check that, that was my understanding, but um I'll just verify that for you.
Sure. Uh, on the basis of that, move a brief adjournment, I may have a mover for a five minute adjournment councillors. Councillor Gibson moving, councillor Howe seconding any opposition. Now, we'll take a five minute adjournment to allow the CEO to confirm when that information is provided to councillors and then councillors can review that accordingly and then we'll move on into debate. Thank you. And then councillors can review that accordingly, and then we'll move on into debate. Thank you.
Liz, John. Okay, Steve. All right, you just said it was sent to the landholders, not us, so where's it at?
All right, councillor, just looking for the emails, I'll just get back to you in a second.
That's all right. So because that hasn't been provided to all of that, all of us, can you answer the question then, please?
He'll answer, he was going to answer the question, but there's been no change since the last correspondence to
I couldn't remember what the last one was.
Yeah. E-governance, are we back on?
Yep, we're back on.
Right, thank you very much. We hand over to our CEO, Steve Pearceente.
Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Clancy.
Just waiting for councillor Ferguson.
Sorry, I didn't know it was off.
Thanks councillors, I did find the email, but the latest update was, and I'll circulate to the councillors just a minute, once I finish talking, was provided to a number of people who had been part of that correspondence, which included a number of external parties, and so I'll circulate that to all councillors, but effectively there'd been some earlier updates, which was some time ago, to acknowledge that identified there was a matter between, in our view, between the landowner and the state government, and that's still the current status of the matter. So the, just chatting to the general manager in that area, there was there is some relevance in the overall submission in terms of recovery funding, but not specifically related, more specifically related, I should say, to councillors' recovery processes as per the recommendations before council, so I'll circulate that to you very shortly.
No worries, thank you. So we don't need to change our submission, and that was the part that I wanted to find out. So thank you very much. Do you want me to keep speaking?
Just going to recap, we've got a mover in councillor Gibson, we have a seconder in councillor Clancy. And just, and there's no opposition on this one. So councillor Gibson, back to you.
Okay, so yes, in light of the answer to that, I'm more than happy to support this motion. And it really needed, in the submission, it really needed to be stated that, you know, while you're in the middle of recovery, you haven't got time to fill out damn forms. So the officers have put it a bit nicer than that, but they've put it through. Because they're doing their job, they're not doing this. So, and anyone who has applied for grants in the past would know that grant funding is not the easiest thing to do at all. So I'm delighted in what the officers have put forward in the submission. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Clancy?
No, no, I'm happy to speak. I think this is a good submission, and councillor Gibson summed that up very well. This was an internal, sorry, an independent, I knew it started with I, an independent review of the Commonwealth disaster funding that Senator Murray Watt commissioned. And asked for, you know, affected areas of Australia to make submissions to. I just wanted to note that I think we were had a great, good opportunity to meet with Senator Watt when he was down after the floods that came through and the storm events that came through. And it was a good opportunity to talk face to face, but I think that this is a documented piece that our officers have been able to pull together and make that formal submission to this independent review. And as councillor Gibson has mentioned, it's about filling in forms and a lot of our submission and the officers' work that have done this is we've talked about our own experiences as an area that's been affected by a natural disaster. Our experiences as an organisation, as a council, about applying for funding and identifying areas that needed work. And a lot of our submission is about that onerous paperwork that councils need to put in and the public assets that we might own or manage. And need to really be rectified to be able to get them back to the community use as quickly as we can. And yes, it is complex and it is difficult, and I want to make sure that they have everything done correctly. But also, they don't want to be at the other end of the scar, whereas carte blanche, as soon as there's a natural disaster and they're just handing out money left, right and centre. So I think that our submission has talked about the complexities of disaster relief funding. And the officers experiencing in filling in those forms and getting getting that, those public assets back up and running as soon as we can. So this is a good submission, and hopefully as we go forward and we know that we've we've had natural disasters, whether they be floods, whether they be fires, or whether they be storm events, we're seeing them more and more regularly now. And hopefully this submission and this independent review can go some way to actually ensure that we have an expediated process into the future, to ensure that once events happen, that we jump on them straight away and we can get our assets and our services and the things that council run for our community back up and running as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillors, anyone else wish to speak to this question? Nope, okay, we didn't have any opposition to this one, so we'll go straight to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson and myself. That one is carried unanimously. Item six four is a relief, release of the draft governance rules for public consultation on page ninety four. I note to councillor Howe, councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe?
I have an alternative motion for this one. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Sure, we'll just bring it up on the screen.
That's version four, I believe.
Version four is there for councillors, just to allow them that opportunity to have a look at that. Councillor Gibson, I noted you.
I was moving version five, but on my computer, I haven't got my laptops. My iPad, sorry, so I can't see the differences that was sent out this afternoon with the two versions.
Do you have another device with email councillor?
Not in front of me, no. Unless I shinny outside to the car.
Councillors, we're moving to an adjournment for five minutes. We'll catch councillor Gibson up on the nature of version four. Councillor Clancy, can I have a motion please? Happy to move. Thank you. Could I have a seconder please? Councillor Gibson, any opposition? We'll take five minutes, we'll catch up councillor Gibson on the nature of this councillor. Howe?
Just on mine, I've had the officers highlight the changes in yellow, so it'll make it easy for you to flip through the agenda and offset through the motion, sorry, and see where the changes are.
Sure, yes, fine, we'll sort that through if governance can take us back to holding. And then we will catch councillor Gibson up. Councillor Gibson, you might need to just minimise this particular screen, so you can check your emails. We'll be back in five. You know, we can allow for a number of these adjournments, but we do have to make sure that we've got our stuff ready before we actually get into the council. It's just holding up the debate.
I'll count you in. So, four, three, two, one, going live.
Welcome back everyone. We apologise for that delay. We are on to item six four. This is a release of the draft governance rules. It's on page ninety-four of the agenda. We do have an alternate motion. Councillor Howe is our mover. I'll give councillor Gibson the option to second or to give it to somebody else.
Um, can I, can I ask a question for you?
Councillor, if you're not clear, we're going to go into debate on this. We've had a number of delays so far.
No, I was just going to ask you, so then I'll say whether I'm going to second it or not.
Right.
Okay, can I just ask that if councillor, if I second it, can councillor Howe, um, go through the differences please?
I think councillor.
Go through them now or?
No, I think it's. When you speak to it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Yes.
Okay. On, on that basis, I'm happy to second the motion.
Do you have any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Howe, over to you. You've got your three minutes.
Okay, thanks. My microphone's on yet. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, I thought I'd start by talking about proposed changes that are in the agenda and then talk about the three or four alterations that I've put in this altern- alternative motion. Okay, um, so this motion has recommended several changes to our governance rules. Um, and this is what we propose to release to the public for their consideration. Major changes are, there's a new definition has been added regarding conflict of interest together with hybrid and virtual meetings. Existing definitions of council and delegated committee meetings have been expanded to include references to virtual and hybrid formats. A new clause has been added allowing the CEO, in consultation with the mayor, to change the location of a meeting subject to giving reasonable public notice of the change. Uh, there's new clauses regarding the conduct of council meetings in virtual or hybrid formats. The ability for the CEO to refer, notice a motion to the operational service request process. Um, a report of consideration at a council briefing or an out of sessions workshop or handling under delegation. Um, a new clause has been introduced with regard to deferral of debate on a matter to a later council meeting requiring, requiring a supplemental report to be included if the reason for the deferral is to consider additional information not already included. Um, and all, all suitable public questions will be read at a council meeting with a response provided by the CEO at the meeting. Um, these, these changes will streamline the process, provide greater consistency and transparency. Now, the alternative notion I proposed has the following changes to the motion that is in tonight's agenda. So if you go to, um, eleven point two, um, clause eleven point one B will not apply in unforeseen circumstances. That is if we have, is the councillor has to, um, at the last minute, say that he needs to attend a council meeting virtually rather than, rather than in person. Um, the CEO will collaborate with the councillor to develop revised wording to the draft notice of motion to facilitate, facilitate compliance with the requirements for the notice of motion under these rules. Um, in the, in the, um, original motion, he's got an option this way. In this, um, case, the CEO won't have that option. Um, we're removing twenty-two point seven, which states if a councillor proposing the notice of motion, which is to make minor changes to the notice of motion, he or she with the consent of the chair may do so prior to being, it being seconded. So this is getting removed from the, um, from the original policy. So, uh, they're the changes that I've made. I think these changes make sense, all of them. Um, and I'm happy to, happy to support this motion to release the draft governance rules to public consultation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson, speaker reserve.
I'll speak, Madam Mayor. Look, we're not far off. The part that I, I, I disagree with is this is councillor's motion. Now, I do not believe, oh, I have no problem about we need to, if it's going to cost the council money or anything, it needs to be referred to, um, budgets. And we've done that since you and I have been on council, which is quite a few years. So I have no problem with that. I have no problem with the CEO talking with the, the councillor to make sure it's clear, it's concise. It, it doesn't, um, go against any of our policies. All, all of that. I have no problem with that. Where I do have an issue is with the, the CEO deciding to take it, um, take away the, the NOM and put it through an operational report. So I'm sorry, I, I disagree with that. Apart from the rest councillor Howe, yep, not a problem. But this is councillor's NOM, not, and I'm, I'm sorry, I disagree with that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do we have other speakers in relation to this? Councillor Ferguson just picked it up. So there councillor Clancy, councillor Ferguson. Was it, oh, no, you've moved. There you go. Sorry. One of these hands moved around and removed, so I've lost you. I'm going to go councillor Ferguson, councillor Clancy, then councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Ferguson, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I do have some concerns around that too. Um, the reason is because I just want to, uh, put some context around that for, um, the followers of the meeting as well. Um, so our motions that we put forward, um, they, they add transparency and accountability. They allow councillors to publicly propose and discuss important issues of policy changes. They sometimes help set to the agenda for council meetings. By submitting a notice, councillors can ensure that their proposed topics or motions are discussed and voted upon during the meeting. They help with initiating debate and discussion. And it provides a further opportunity for councillors to initiate debate and discussion on specific issues. Um, it helps to represent our constituents and notices of motion are a mechanism which allow councillors to bring forward issues or concerns raised directly by their constituents. By proposing motions, councillors can advocate for the interests and needs of their constituents, ensuring that their voices are heard and addressed. Driving policy changes, by proposing motions, councillors can influence the direction and priorities of the local government, shaping the policies and services provided to the community. For collaboration and consensus building, they provide an opportunity for councillors to collaborate together, build consensus on important issues. Proposing motions, councillors can seek support from their colleagues, engage in discussions and work towards finding common ground or compromises. Overall, I'm just like to say that notices of motion play a crucial role in the democratic process by allowing councillors to raise important issues, drive policy changes and ensure transparency and accountability in local government decision-making. Therefore, I disagree with, um, the involvement or the change, as councillor Gibson was saying, because I think it needs to remain as that mechanism for the people. So that us as councillors and our representatives may use that unhindered. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Councillor Clancy, then I'll go to councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Um, uh, I'm, I'm happy with the, the, um, um, draft uh, version four, which we, um, currently have before us at the moment. Um, and I'm happy with the, the ch- small changes that have been made by the officers and then through consultation with the councillors. Uh, councillor Howe has put forward some smaller ones, which I think includes some collaboration and um, some extreme circumstances and things like that. And I will laugh at councillor Middlemiss, whose lights just went out in the lounge that he's in. You probably need to stand up councillor to trigger the sensor. Here we go. We've lost him just for a second. Um, but we've noticed that the lights go. So, oh, I'm saying that I'm, I'm very happy with as it's presented. What I did wanted to, and why I raised my hand to speak is just to re- remind people and as councillor Ferguson talked about with people who are following the meeting, make sure that people are aware that these are draft, uh, governance rules. That this isn't a, a fait accompli this evening. This is a draft, uh, that, that goes out for consultation. So, uh, as of next week, the Monday, the tenth of July, uh, these will be released for a four-week community consultation process. And we would, as we always do, encourage people to have a read of the draft and tell us what your thoughts are. And if you think that, 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 you know, that they've got some thoughts on this or you're a governance geek or you've, you've, you've got some background in it, you'd like to have uh, your say, we're accepting comments for four weeks up until Monday, the seventh of August. So these draft governance rules go out for community consultation. It's an opportunity for the community to have a read and have, uh, write your notes down and put, put some thoughts into that as well. That's open for that one period of time. Then a further report will be coming back to council. And then obviously we'll go into, um, to adopting, um, what, what, what the final recommendation is. But for the next four weeks, they're a draft and they're out for community consultation. So we'd encourage you to, to have a bit of a look. They're available. They'll be in hard copies, obviously, but available on our website through, um, latrobe.vic.gov.au.
Thank you councillor Clancy. Councillor Middlemiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Apologies for that. Uh, it's very hard to find a light switch in the dark. But, um, we've got some lights, I'm back. When this, uh, when the first draft of these proposals came out, I was totally opposed. Um, the big concern I had was that the window in which councillors had to actually lodge, um, notices of motion virtually cut us down to one, one and a half weeks in every month. Um, it turns out that was a typographical error. So much of my very strong opposition evaporated because we went back to exactly the system we're operating at the moment. The rest, there are quite a few small changes in here, which I'm not greatly comfortable with. But I'm prepared to give them a trial. Just bear in mind councillors, uh, we can change this at any time we like. Uh, it is our council, these are our regulations. So, um, I'm prepared to give them a trial. I'm not too comfortable with them, I'll be quite honest. But, um, I'm, I'm happy to support this motion. And look, I, I think councillor Howe he's put in a power work around this, uh, and come up with a compromise, which I think most of us should be comfortable with. But, uh, yeah, not totally comfortable, but happy to give it a try. And the main reason for my objection has been removed, so, uh, I'll go for it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just want to start with a question through you if I could. Sorry, where are we, um, going to put these out so that people can actually engage with their views? How can people access this document? How can people leave their reviews? If I could, Madam Mayor?
Uh, it's addressed in some manner in the report. Mr. CEO, is there anything absent other than the information already provided?
I think in general terms, we've just launched a new engagement platform. I think it's referenced in the report, so that'll be the the primary mechanism, the ability for others though to participate in that. And I think it might have been a previous question that was asked in another way, so I'm happy to help facilitate that as best we can. It is covered off in the, you touched on the consultation section of the report.
Yep, so the standard process as well as the new platform. Thank you. Councillor Harriman.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not supportive of this at all. Um, my, with, with keeping it short and sharp, knowing that there's been others go through some of the issues with it. I don't see how we can give the power to decide to a non-elected official over the rights of elected officials who are representing our community to put up a notice of motion raised by the community, raised by those who elect us and have it denied by an unelected official. Um, that just doesn't make sense. You wouldn't see it happening in state parliament, you wouldn't see it happening in federal government. But at local government, it seems we're happy to hand over our rights and the rights of those we represent to put a notice of motion up. Most of the notice of motions I put up come through the community wanting something done. This takes away that right. It strikes at the fundamentals of local government. It strikes at the fundamentals of elected officials. And I am appealing to no doubt the hordes of people watching this on YouTube, but those in the community, to put in their thoughts on it. If you don't support unelected officials having the right to mute your elected officials, then make your stand heard. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Not sure that's the nature of the officer's intention. They press their advice and then we make a determination from there. Councillors, any other speakers? All right, got some cameras moving around. Just do right there Graham. Yep, we've got you back on camera. Just checking, got everyone there? Okay. Uh, we didn't have any opposition at the start. Uh, we have had speakers against, but there wasn't any opposition listed. So we don't have the opportunity to close, but I will put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Law? Councillor Clancy? Councillor Howe? Councillor Lund? Councillor Middlemiss? And myself. Those against? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Harriman? Councillor Ferguson? And then the alt, which was presented by councillor Howe, is therefore carried. Thank you, councillors. Moving through now to six five, this is the economic development membership renewals. Commences on page one sixty of the agenda. Councillors, do you have a motion? Councillor Harriman? Meeting councillor Harriman?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Who is councillor Middlemiss? Seconding?
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Do I have any opposition councillors? No opposition there. Everyone's just reshimmyed on the screens. Councillor Harriman, back straight back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm quite happy to support this. I think, um, what council's looked at fairly responsibly is those organisations that provide value to council and provide a voice, um, to the community and look after those interests that are, that are particular to the community, particularly business. Um, and I think those we're stepping away from, which is food and fibre Gippsland. Um, I think it really comes down to the input we've had into it, um, has been lacking. And we really don't see value for it. All the others, I'm quite happy to support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillor Middlemiss, speaker reserve.
I might as well speak. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, people might ask what value do we get from these organisations, but they are the peak organisations in their speciality fields across Victoria, across Australia even. And through them, we are able to see where particular industries are going, what developments are occurring. And we are able to join in representation to government on a very, uh, large collective basis. So these organisations keep us in the loop, keep us informed and are very handy making representation to government. So, um, if I could just use a small example, I don't think there are many people in Trogan uh, who don't want the Trogan bypass. Uh, through South East Australian Transport Strategy, the Southern New South Wales councils and the Gippsland councils have swung in lobbying the government, uh, for the Trogan bypass to go ahead as soon as possible. Um, and together, that many, uh, local government organisations making a detailed case. Uh, for instance, um, some trucks into east Gippsland now are having to stop short because of the delays through Trogan, having to stop short of their destination because the drivers' logbooks have run out. Uh, that's concerning them. And the weight of their representation helps us in making the case for much sooner than later for the, uh, Trogan bypass. And I'm sure I could go through each of these organisations and make a similar case. But, uh, I think we get a great deal of value. Um, some people say, oh, look at that amount of money. But, um, you know, we're, we're talking a budget of about a hundred and forty million dollars. So these are very small, quite reasonable figures for the value we get. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, any other speakers in relation to item six five? Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that, um, I commend the officers for including the Timber Towns Victoria and National Timber Councils Association. I'm quite pleased that we're going to continue with a, a positive outlook and still, we'll still renew our, um, memberships to that. And I'm happy with all the decisions made. And I think, like Graham said, we do get our value for money from those selected ones that are recommended. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yes, councillor Ferguson was right. And especially with what we're up against at the moment in relation to the timber, it is so important that we are at that table. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, any further speakers? Councillor Ferguson, a question?
Um, yes, I just wanted to check though, the Australia-China Business Council wasn't listed as a possible influence um, in a submission regarding espionage?
Just going to get clear on the nature of the question in relation to this particular item councillor.
I thought that in, uh, the history of things, there was a submission made um, in regards to, um, different influences in espionage from China. And that Australia-China Business Council could have possibly have been listed as a possible influence.
I'm just going to hold there for a moment councillor. Um, just want to make sure that I don't create any issues either for us or for you in relation to the question. So just allow me just to get clear on that. Just want to make sure we're okay in terms of the response on that one. So let's hold for a moment. And then I'll go to, uh, the CEO in relation to the nature. And then I'll go to the CEO in relation to the nature of the economic development memberships. I believe there had been a previous answer, but I'm just gonna, I honestly, I can't recall word for word, I am going to defer to the CEO on this one. Mr Piersenty, dear, you may have a better memory of this, I believe Mr Ellis may have provided some context, but are you able to make clear?
I can, madam mayor, so I've had the team just send me some additional information. We did provide a response, but that body that's referenced in our memberships was not part of that. That's the one that's chaired by John Brumby, I recall, and that they do provide valuable advice. There might have been some other entities, it might have been referenced in some other reports that councillor Ferguson might be discussing there, but I'd be happy to take that part on notice. But the advice that we had provided, and it's just been reinforced in some notes to myself, was a valuable body and they do provide value to us. And that's the one that's chaired by John Brumby, which is different to some others that might have been floating around.
Right, just wanted to make clear councillor Ferguson, yes, I choose organisations by the sounds of it, but thank you for that. Any subsequent questions councillor Ferguson?
Well, I happen to have that submission, I can forward it for examination.
Do you like to take an adjournment councillor?
I guess so, if you'd like to look at that now and just, I just need that reassurance that the one mentioned on the page 14 and the submission isn't the same one.
Okay, I'm going to see whether your colleagues are prepared to take up the option of an adjournment, do I have a mover? Councillor Harriman's a mover, councillor Gibson's a second, now we'll take a five-minute adjournment councillors, that will allow, just make governance, if you can pop us back to a hold. Thank you everyone, apologies for that delay, we'll continue to move through, I'm going to allow the CEO a write of reply and then I'll do a recap on where we're at in terms of our speakers and where we are next, because we're just about to go to the vote on item six five. Mr CEO, write a reply on that one?
Thanks madam mayor, yes, thanks councillor Ferguson for providing that document, which had been cited by one of the team previously. The reference to the Australia-China Business Council was made in a submission to a parliamentary inquiry in relation to national security legislation amendments back in 2017. I've had a look at the government's response in relation to that inquiry and it doesn't specifically mention or reference any concerns in relation to the Australia-China Business Council and their final determination from what I've read. I'll provide a further update to councillors though, following this meeting, but it doesn't seem to have referenced that in the final outcome, so although it was a submission, it didn't, as I said, provide any outcomes in relation to it. And I suppose going back to the earlier point, we had had a bit of a look at this internally and had formed the view, an officer's position to council would be that does still provide senior key value to council along with the other committees that are recommended, membership, sorry, that are recommended on the item before you, so thanks madam mayor.
Thank you, Mr Piersenty. So councillors, we have not had opposition on this one, we have had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Clancy, councillor Ferguson, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Harriman, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss and myself, that one is carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. Councillors, moving on to six point six, this is the review of council support and expense policy commencing on page 169 of the agenda councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Howe? Have any opposition councillors? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Howe? Anything on this or we'll move through? No, okay, we considered that one, there's no one else to speak? One's carried unanimously. Six seven is the authorisation of council offices under planning and environment act 1987, commencing on page 199, councillor Gibson's moving, councillor Middlemiss is seconding. Any opposition councillors? It's fundamentally procedural unless anyone has the desire to speak to this one? No, that one's carried unanimously councillors, we'll keep moving through. There are no items in the sevens tonight, which would normally be our statutory planning related matters. Next on the items is item eight, corporate decisions for delegations, we have eight items in this section, the first is eight one, partial sale of land, 60 Lafayette Street to Trogan, commencing on page 211, thank you councillor Howe, I note you, moving councillor Harriman, take it, you're seconding councillor Harriman. Councillors, is there any opposition? No opposition on that one, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak to that one?
No, thanks madam mayor, fairly straightforward.
Okay councillor Harriman? No, anyone else need to speak to this one? No speakers, we'll consider that one, carried unanimously. Next is eight two, review of the capital works policy commencing on page 218 of the agenda, councillor Gibson, moving?
I am, and a question please?
Yes, so I take that, moving and a question?
Do you want the question now?
Yes please.
No worries. Just a question on dot point two under priority given, will we give them to projects where? And the second dot point is talking about clubs or groups providing 10% or more of the funds. My question is, can it be in kind at all or not?
Mr CEO, point of clarification?
I may just need to get some advice, madam mayor, from my team. Give me a minute, whether that...
Right, I don't think we need to adjourn on that one, I think that one's...
I think the advice I had back it does from the team is financial contributions were what was expected, so that would be the norm. I think though, if there was a matter where there was a solid project and there was genuine in kind, I have seen projects where in kind has been offered to council and hasn't eventuated, so it is very problematic and I suppose that's why the officers would suggest that financial contributions are those that are expected. However, I think there would be circumstances where that may be able to be considered by council as long as the in kind, and I've seen this work effectively is supported by some other conditions such as even a bank guarantee, I've seen work from some of the organisations that I've had work with in the past, so, but the financial contributions is the, I suppose, the default position, madam mayor.
So councillor Gibson, was there a mover? Do I have a seconder? No seconder, relapse. Councillor Lund? Any opposition councillors? Councillor Harriman is in opposition to this one, councillor Gibson, back to you.
Okay, madam mayor, I thought this was an easy one, but no it's not. Okay, look, I was happy to support this because you really need a capital works policy. You can't just have groups, clubs or anything else doing work that is substantive. So that's why you've got to have a policy, I believe, but I am interested to hear what the opposition is. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund, to speak or reserve?
Sorry, I'll reserve.
Okay, councillor Harriman, over to you.
Thanks madam mayor, I was supportive of this, this item, and we do need a capital works policy, councillor Gibson is absolutely correct. My opposition comes out of being approached on Saturday night and Sunday by three different community groups that were aware of this and had an issue with priority being given to those rich clubs that can afford to put in 10%, as opposed to smaller clubs who don't have a huge financial backing or who are making subsidies. So particularly during hard times like these, those that are disadvantaged aren't kicked out of the sport. They have, and as they pointed out to me on Sunday, they have a greater need for funding because they are working with disadvantaged groups and aren't taking as much money as they could so that we can get those people included in these, in these sports, in these community clubs and in these, these, these outlets for the, not only the children but the parents as well. And in these, 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 these outlets for the, not only the children, but the, the parents as well. And to then say that a richer club that's charging a huge membership or that's charging a substantial membership that has money in the bank will get priority over them, they felt was not equitable. And failed the pub test. So on those grounds, that's, that one point is the sticking point I have. I'm quite happy with, with ninety-nine percent of this works policy, and we do need one. But as I said, having been approached by three different groups and having them raise that issue and the points behind it. While we have that ten percent in there, you know, we'll, we'll allow some clubs to jump the queue. I can't support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor Middlemiss?
I have become totally confused, Madam Mayor. Are we on eight point two or eight point three?
Eight point two, review of the capital works policy on two eighty.
I'll reserve till eight point three, thank you.
Okay, councillor Clancy.
Uh, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Obviously, the, the, the policy itself is, is quite deep and it, it runs, you know, there's twelve pages of, of policy there. And it, it, it obviously does have some concern in councillor Harriman, the point you've brought up and, and what councillor Gibson as well. If I could just make some clarity on, in, in the policy itself, not in the recommendation nor the, the overview. But in the policy itself, it does say, well, where councillor Gibson and councillor Harriman have talked about ten percent user groups or clubs are able to provide ten percent or more of funds, this day will be given a higher priority. The sub-point of that is that community service clubs are not required to meet this contribution. So community service clubs don't have to put in that ten percent. And via definition at the end of the policy, a community service club is a not-for-profit club or group that performs charitable works either by direct hands-on efforts or by raising money for other organisations. So community service clubs don't have to put in that ten percent. And I just wanted to make that really clear that, that, that obviously is a concern for people. And, and in, in reading the, the policy as a general hold, and you think, oh, we won't apply because we're gonna have to, you know, you've got a fifteen thousand dollar project, you're gonna have to kick in ten percent. If you are a community service club, that does not apply to you. But the policy itself as, as a whole and, and the, and the rest of the policy is, it talks about prioritisation and making for grants and getting things, getting our clubs and their services and, and all the facilities up to spec. It is a really, really good policy. So just a point of clarification in there, if people are requesting or, or people, you know, approaching councillors like councillor Harriman had on Saturday night, that people can, you, you can recognise that you can, you don't, you don't have to put in ten percent if you are a community service club.
Thank you, councillor Clancy. Councillors, any other speakers in relation to this? No, councillor Gibson, you have the right of response to close.
Um, no, councillor Lund, reserved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Lund, did you want to jump?
Oh, yeah, that's okay. I was just going to, to raise the point, or firstly acknowledge the concerns that, that have been raised, but it is addressed in the policy. The ten percent is the default position, but we do have that safety net for community services clubs. I don't believe that the intention of, of this is to financially disadvantage clubs that might be experiencing financial difficulties or unable to raise that sort of funds. And I believe the safe, safety nets inside the policies will capture that. So thank you, councillor Clancy, for raising that as well.
Councillor, now back to you, councillor Gibson, if you want a place.
Yeah, no worries. Okay, just really quickly, look, I, I, I take the point about councillor Harriman, but I would hope that this is a ladies' fears, although if there is a club who is not a service provider and all the rest of the different items, I would hope that they could still apply and we would use common sense and discretion as to what we would do with the actual application. Thank you.
Councillor Gibson. Uh, councillors, that brings us to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Clancy and myself, those gates. Councillor Ferguson, councillor Harriman, the motion is carried. Councillors, we're now moving on to eight three. I need you, councillor Middlemiss. The Recreation Needs Assessment for the Recreation Infrastructure Fund Policy Review, starting on two thirty-seven of your agenda. Do I have a mover? Councillor Middlemiss is moving. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Howe, do you have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Middlemiss, back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Eight two and eight three are intertwined, really, if you look at them. What it comes down to, they're both well thought out policies around where, excuse me, our capital should go. Where our needs for recreation facilities should be, should be focused. The only reservation I have about this is pretty much the reservation that councillor Howe raised. And that is small clubs with not a lot of members will often sit in the waiting list, waiting for funding, waiting for support, et cetera, for quite a while, because they simply get run over because, quite rightly, by other clubs which have a lot more members and a lot more need for players to have facilities, et cetera. And I think the only answer on that one is for councillors to be vigilant and just watch that the smaller clubs don't fall out of the, don't fall off the list. So the policy's well thought out, the policy's extremely fair, but could disadvantage some people, as councillor Harriman says, some small clubs. Councillor's probably getting sick of me whinging about the more baseball club. They, they have for a long time been waiting for some, some upgraded facilities, et cetera. And they simply don't have the membership base to qualify on, or the support money, either of these two policies that we've gone through. So really, these policies are fair, they're well thought through, they come up with a good result. But if people do fall through the cracks, it falls back, in my view, on the ward councillors to, to push them forward again. So I'm quite comfortable to move this one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Middlemiss. Councillor Howe, speak or reserve?
Oh, speak, thanks, Madam Mayor. So this motion is actually asking to endorse two policies. One's the Recreation Needs Assessment. The other is the Recreation Infrastructure Funding Policy. So I'll just briefly speak to both, just just so our committee knows what, what they are and how they work. So the rec needs assessment, that's broken up into three areas. We have a light, we have the lighting projects, the pavilion projects and the surface projects. And, and what Latrobe City does is we, we go and assess all the infrastructure that we have. It's, it's assessed against half a dozen different, different KPIs. It might be, depending on each, each project obviously has different, different ones. It might be the trend in the sport or or the, will it attract major events or will it help grow, grow participation in the sport? And it's all rated, and then we're given a list. So we know exactly when, when we get some funding or, or through the budget process. We know what, what lighting projects are on, on top of the list, and then we have a list. We know the surface projects and we have a list. So there's no, there's no squeaky wheel, there's no clubs pushing or councillors pushing because it's there. What is needed the most is what's funded and upgraded first. So that's, that's a really good policy that we have. The second one is, is our infrastructure funding policy. And what this does is ensure that there's a, there's a fair and consistent allocation of our council resources. What it does is identify what the funding responsibilities are for the core and for the optional infrastructure, what the user groups pay for and what the council is responsible for. So it gives clear guidelines each for what's funding, what their, each responsibilities are. So two good policies. I'm happy to start both. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillors, any other speakers at this point? We didn't have any opposition, so we don't have the opportunity to close, but we have had speakers. We'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Gibson, oh, hang on, the screen just moved. Just gonna run through that again. Councillor Law, councillor Ferguson, councillor Clancy, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Harriman, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss and myself. Sorry if I double counted anybody there. That one was carried unanimously. Uh, next is eight point four. This is a request for the delegation of chief executive officer to award the provision of architectural design services twenty twenty-six Commonwealth Games contract commencing on page two seventy-nine of the agenda. Do I have a motion, councillors? Councillor Law, happy to move the motion. Councillor Gibson, seconding. Any opposition, councillors? No opposition. Councillor Law, back to you. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly, it is just purely so that anything that comes of the government, the Commonwealth Games, and we need to react quickly, we're basically just giving the power to the CEO to move as quickly as possible to find the best way forward. We're actually running out of time to, to put these games on. So I think this is just clearly just covering our bases so that we can actually start the process as quick as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillor Gibson?
Uh, I would have to agree with what my fellow councillor said. We are running out of time to be able to hold things, so it needs to be done.
Thank you. Councillor Harriman, then councillor Ferguson.
Just a question through you, if I could, Madam Mayor. Is it in there? Or notice in the past, we have said as long as there's no cost to council, is that part of this agreement?
Mister CEO?
The, there was a prior decision, I think last month, delegating power to ensure that things could proceed within budget or no cost to council. As this one, I think is more about provision of a panel. There'd need to be further consideration, but certainly not in terms of sign-off within my delegation. It's certainly no intention that it would be outside of budget that's approved and/or that there's a council contribution, so.
Fantastic. Thank you, CEO, Mister CEO, and thank you, Madam Mayor. That puts my mind at great rest.
Did you want to speak, councillor Harriman?
No, no, it was just that question, Madam Mayor. That was just tickling my mind. I know we've done it in the past. And the CEO has quite clearly put my mind at rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanted to further pretty much what Darren said too, is that here we are in a short timeframe and how critical that is. And it's not a delegation that any of us would agree to lightly. So just wanted to make that point also. Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson, councillors, any other speakers? No. Um, we haven't had opposition. We do have speakers. We'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour, councillors? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Harriman, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Clancy and myself. That one is carried unanimously. Eight five is the tourism and major events advisory committee recommendations due in twenty twenty-three. I note you, councillor Howe, I note you-
Madam Mayor, I'm going to declare a conflict of interest at this point. On the grounds that I sit on the board of Gibson United, who have a working arrangement with Deakin Melbourne Boomers to bring women's sport down to the region. So if somebody can throw me into exile, that would be great.
We'll just drop you into the waiting room now. Putting you in, councillor Gibson.
Seconding, Madam Mayor.
Seconding, thank you very much. So we have councillor Howe as a mover. We have councillor Gibson as a seconder. Do I have any opposition, councillors? No opposition on this one. Councillor Howe, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got tonight two more fantastic events. Brought to tonight's meeting for endorsement from our Tourism and Major Events Committee. The first one is the Deacon Melbourne Boomers National Basketball League match, which will be holding in March two thousand and twenty-four. This will be the fourth year that we run this in-season match against the CU Canberra. Our contribution to this event will be ten thousand dollars with an estimated economic return of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So that's a return of fifty-seven dollars for every one dollar spent. It also provides great exposure to our city and our facilities, as well as providing our community to come and watch basketball played at the highest level. The second event is the Baseball Victorians Under Sixteen Winter Championships. We'll be hosting from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. We have hosted this event for the previous three years. This proposal is that we continue on for a further three. Our contribution will be five thousand dollars for an estimated economic return of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a return of thirty-five dollars for each one dollar spent. This event will showcase the best of under sixteen players from across Victoria and also provide an economic boost to our local businesses, especially the accommodation providers and the eateries. Very happy to, to move this motion. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Howe, councillor Gibson? No, okay. Any other councillors to speak on this one? Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you. I just want to commend officers because I really love that they, we have this opportunity to have these events. Overall, I think that Commonwealth Games Centre and basketball tourism in Latrobe City provide a vibrant sports and recreational scene for both locals and the visitors. And therefore, I'm really happy to see this go through, but also I think that it's great marking us as a centre for sport leading up to the Commonwealth Games, and I'm very happy about that. So I'd just like to pass that on to officers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillors, any further speakers in relation to this one? No, we haven't had any opposition on this one, so there's no close. We have had speakers, though. We'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Clancy and myself. That one is carried unanimously. I'll just retrieve councillor Harriman from the waiting room. Here he is. Welcome back, councillor Harriman. Still here, is he okay?
Yep, that's fine, thanks, Madam Mayor. Sorry.
No, you're all right. Just let you settle back in. We're moving into eight six. This is funding for the Latrobe City Business Chamber commencing on page two ninety-nine of your agenda, councillors. And do, councillor Howe, I note you, I have a mover, I'm assuming? Yep, councillor Howe's moving. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Harriman, seconding? Do I have any opposition, councillors? No opposition. Councillor Howe?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Latrobe City Business Chamber, that's a project that I'm particularly excited about. Being involved from the start, it was first bought to council in two thousand and seventeen when councillor Middlemiss was mayor and I was deputy mayor. Councillor Middlemiss really got behind it and made sure that it, that it got the start that it needed. The combined chamber was launched in, final, combined chamber was launched in December last year, having a vision of being the go-to prominent business organisation for Latrobe City. As the key group, I'll be working with organisations such as Becky, the LVA and RDV. As we all have aspirations for Latrobe City being Victoria's regional, regional city, we need to have a strong and vibrant business chamber. This motion requests council provide funding for sixty-nine thousand dollars to assist the chamber in their first year. These funds will be going towards employing a project membership officer and hosting business events for the businesses. If you look at the budget, which is in the, in the report, over the next three years, they're aiming to be self-sufficient within the next three to five years. So I'm very happy to move. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Harriman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the committee that's worked tirelessly over the last couple of years to get the Latrobe City Business Chamber up and running. I've been fortunate to be invited and been able to attend a number of their meetings. They are a dedicated group, they are growing, and their interest is to provide the best business chamber we can for the whole of Latrobe City. It takes away a lot of the precaralism that's, that's hurt our cities in the past. And it's great to see that those that are running it are looking at enhancing Latrobe City's standing as a regional city, one of four, and also looking to promote new businesses, but also help sustain current businesses and provide advice to those businesses going through difficult times at the moment, like a lot of businesses are, but providing not only, not only difficult times at the moment, like a lot of businesses are, but providing um not only, not only uh su- the 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 knowledgeable support, but also the mental health support that a lot of our businesses have needed over the last couple of years. So to the committee and those involved at the edges of it and getting this up and running and keeping it going, congratulations. Thank you for what you're doing for our city and I think this is money very, very well spent. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillors, any further speakers on this one? Anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also endorse this proposal. Uh, for some years we've had difficulty in hearing a united voice of the business and particularly the retail community uh in Latrobe City, which has hampered our our dealings and our policymaking. It is absolutely important that we are able to hear from that group across Latrobe City and uh the formation of the business chamber is is a great asset for us, uh when considering the impacts on business of various decisions. Uh, what's required in our city to enhance our economy. Um, nothing but positive that I can see in this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, any other speakers? No, we haven't had opposition. We have had speakers. We'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself. That one is carried unanimously. Thank you so much. Councillors? Eight seven is the Audit and Risk Committee Membership Matters commencing on page three forty five of the agenda. Councillor Law, I note you, moving. And councillor Middlemiss, my seconda? Any opposition councillors? No opposition on that one. Councillor Law, back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just like to point out that this is probably the most uh important independent committee we have that takes part within our um council, um the Audit and Risk Committee. Um, at times we have uh a section of time where people have to retire and um it's Bev Excel, who has been an exceptional chairperson of this committee, has reached her nine years and um has to move on, which is disappointing in some ways, but we had to go and reappoint a new audit person to that position. Um, the panel uh uh of uh applications, I should say, the applications, there were twenty five applications for the one position, which was um brought down to four interview positions, uh and of which two are very uh suitably qualified, of which one, uh Miss Jane Watson was appointed to the uh uh Audit and Risk Committee and also uh David Cortham will take up our new chair of that committee with uh Bev uh being uh having to retire from that position. So I fully endorse this most important independent committee on our council and um I think we've got a very good appointment as uh of Jane for the the new committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Law. Councillor Middlemiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To ensure that uh the audit committee, which as councillor Law said is our most essential committee, uh the rate payers rely on this committee to make sure everything the council does, and I mean everything, is uh um above board. Um, but to make sure there is a steady change of people on it to keep a fresh perspective all the time, um each of the appointments is time limited and you can see here some changes taking place um as part of that. The key thing, councillor Law's covered all the, all everything, but the key thing is that um Bev Excel has retired as our uh chair of our Audit and Risk uh Committee, um after her nine years, it's a compulsory retirement. Bev has been an outstanding chair uh of our Audit and Risk Committee. Uh, I'm sure councillor Law will back me up on this. She has been across every aspect of operation of the council. Um, very sharp on everything and I think we can credit a lot of our um excellent administrative and uh and financial situation to the oversight of Bev and um I'm very much uh uh in favour of sending her a um a letter thanking her for the tremendous service on our behalf. But uh um important changes, I'm sure we've still got a very, very good team and it's a pity to see our uh our past chair going, but uh nine years, time for a new one. But a fabulous job done by Bev Excel. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Councillors, any other speakers on this one? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I I would have to endorse uh what my fellow councillor said. I was one of the councillors on the interviewing committee or panel and that's exactly why we appointed her councillor Middlemiss, because she stood out. She has been exceptional and she was in the interviewing um process, so um I I think the least we could do is send her a a card, if not some flowers of thanks.
Councillors, any further speakers? No opposition on this one, but we have had speakers. We'll put it to the vote. Those in favour? Councillor Ferguson, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself. That one is carried unanimously. Eight eight is next up, councillors, policy renewal. Uh, policies requiring administrative updates commencing on page three forty nine of your agenda. Do I have a mover for the motion? Thank you councillors. Or anything else? Councillor Gibson, moving. Have a second please. Councillor Harriman is my seconda. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Gibson, back to you, if you want to speak to this one.
Procedural, so, no.
Thank you. No problem. Councillor Harriman? Happy to skip that one. If there aren't any other speakers, councillors, we'll carry that one unanimously. Thank you. Uh, next, and just to let you know, councillors, given the nature of the time, we'll go to matters of urgent. I'll then give you a break as you're about to put in two minute, two minute, two hour muck. Um, after we've done and then we'll head into noms, that should bring us up to eight o'clock. Uh, next on the agenda is item nine of urgent business. I'm not aware of any urgent business that's been flagged. Mister CEO corrects me otherwise? Nope. Not aware of anything else that needs to be brought? No, so we'll move past that into reports for noting. So ten one is the presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee minutes from the twenty fifth of May. This council's on three hundred and five grey. Oh, I think that might have actually been councillor Ferguson and councillor Law. Moving councillor Ferguson? Yep, councillor Ferguson's moving. That one councillor Law is my seconda. Any opposition councillors? No opposition. Councillor Ferguson, did you need to speak to the minutes?
Oh, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you councillor Law. No, procedural. Anyone else needs to jump in on this one? Okay, on that basis, we'll consider them carried unanimous. Thank you so much. I'm not aware of any questions, I notice, Mister CEO? Not at all. Okay, councillors, we've been in this for a while, we've had a few adjournments. Um, we've still got a way to go in terms of our conversations and potentials for alts etcetera, and I want you to be able to come into those fully refreshed. So unless there are any objections, um we'll take an adjournment at this point until ten past eight. May I have a mover? Councillor Howe, councillor Ferguson's my seconda. I don't see anyone arguing a point at this stage. We'll be back at ten past eight, everyone, to continue on. We will pick up um with our notices of motion as listed in the agenda. Thanks, everyone. See you at ten past.
Three, two, one, we are going live now.
Welcome back everyone, just continuing on, we are into item twelve on our agenda, these are our notices of motion, we have five listed in this section tonight. The first is twelve point one, One Gippsland and native timber harvesting commencing on page four hundred and sixteen of the agenda. This is a notice of motion put by councillor Middlemiss, I note councillor Gibson. And just to make reference in case there is any question in relation to conflict, I see Omon Gippsland as the council nominated representative, so therefore it overcomes issue in relation to conflict. So councillor Middlemiss will be moving this one, councillor Gibson, I noted you seconding?
Yes please.
Any opposition councillors? Councillor Ferguson in opposition?
Um abstaining from the vote but would like to speak to it later.
Uh so separate things, so you can speak to it just as we go through and then as we get to the vote, you can exercise your vote as you so wish.
Okay, thank you, I'm still new to this.
No, that's all right, no problem at all. So councillors, we will head back, sorry to confirm any opposition? So no opposition, councillor Middlemiss, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting a month ago, I spoke against a motion which was condemning the state government for the abrupt cessation of native forest logging. And the reason I did that, and I think I explained the time, but the reason I did that is I believe that the time for condemning or shouting hasn't produced results. Certainly most Gippsland MPs have tried their hardest with yelling and condemning. And don't get me wrong, I've organised a few street marches in my time, but I think we've reached the point where the only way through this is negotiation and I'm therefore proposing this motion as a way of taking this forward. I certainly don't believe that any of the protests that we're indulging in at the moment are going to take us forward. We'd be best served by putting a case as One Gippsland, now One Gippsland is an organisation, used to be the Gippsland Local Government Network. It's the six councils that represent Gippsland. So I believe that the six of us combining together could make a very strong case for what the government needs to do to solve all the issues around the cessation of native logging. I believe the way to commence a negotiation with the government is to produce a factual case based around the facts of this situation, not the emotion, not the hatred, not the temper, but just the facts, how many people have lost their jobs, what will happen to the small towns, particularly in the east of here that rely solely on logging, and of course what will happen for us. I believe if we are to produce such a case and then the procedures outlined in the motion, I won't go through that in detail, it would be very compelling and would give us entree to the state and federal government to at least negotiate around that situation. Make it very difficult for the government to just wipe aside a factually based presentation. Here in Latrobe, we have four hundred and fifty people, that's my estimate of the number who've lost their job plus the immediate supply chain, that's the people driving the trucks into the mill, delivering the blue gum and that kind of stuff. Those people have lost their jobs, I'll put that at four fifty, others put it at much larger figures, I am not an expert on that. And councillor Harriman has given me some figures for across Gippsland, which I'll ask him when he's speaking to this matter later, to actually produce those figures which are quite alarming when you consider them. So at the moment, if I'm just wearing my hat as Latrobe City Councillor, our first priority is those four hundred and fifty jobs. These are people who have lost long term, well paid, secure, almost job for life employment. They're now out on the job market and the job market isn't very strong in Latrobe. Now, there's the knock on effect, they affect the shops, they affect everything, so we have a major problem here. I mean, when we're talking about native forestry, the resumption of or whatever, native forest harvesting, got to ask ourselves, are Maryvale machines M two and M five coming back?
Councillor, Middlemiss, I'm just going to give you another three minutes.
Oh, thank you, I've gone that long already, sorry. I don't think they're going to come back. I think we must accept that situation and we're back to that four hundred and fifty plus jobs. Of course I wonder why on earth didn't Maryvale attempt to access chips, timber from the Green Triangle down Portland Way, load them on the new rail facilities, the new rail line at Warrnambool or Colac, roll them up to the new railway line here into the mill. I can't understand that, why that didn't happen. I've just seen yesterday, the federal government announced a grant of forty eight point five million dollars to Maryvale to build the waste to energy plant, I don't have a problem with that. But if I'd been the federal government, I would have said to them, you're building a new facility to employ four hundred people at Wodonga, why don't you bury it, build it here at Maryvale? That would have solved their problem immediately, but that didn't happen. So what I'm suggesting, let's put a detailed case together. And if you want to see the gravity of it and the effect in other areas in Gippsland, wait till councillor Harriman speaks. I also suggested have another look at logging. And no, that's nowhere near as easy as it looks, there are legal difficulties around it, there are environmental concerns, all that kind of stuff. I've been walking what they call the forty four regrowth since I was a little kid. It's now finally all been harvested. That means this massive area, and it is massive, square miles of this area, which I regularly go up and have a look at, will not be ready for harvesting for another seventy five years. And that's what I was talking about, is there much timber available here? I can remember in the nineties, I was involved in the timber industry as a union representative, getting a presentation from a large timber company about how the area where the Stresleki koalas live, all of that area up there being actually regrowth, plantation timber. And they made a compelling case that that area should be logged again. Now, it's okay, put that case up, you won't get it up, the uprising from the community would be horrendous. So when we're looking at are there opportunities, we need to do it through a fairly, with a fairly clear head. But what can Latrobe do about the job losses, what can Gippsland do about the job losses and the impact on our economy? I offer this motion as a way forward, I don't have any other ideas. I think this will lead us, get us into the negotiations and perhaps make a fairly good case, thank you.
Make it councillor Middlemiss, councillor Gibson.
Reserve please.
Wave at me if I forget. Any other speakers, councillor? Start to make our way through. I did see councillor Ferguson's hand first, councillor Harriman, so I'm not ignoring yours. And councillor Ferguson, further to you, you can speak to any matter in the nature of a vote for or against abstain, states count it as a vote against, it's just the nature of the way that abstain works, but that's fine, but over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I start, I'd just like to say, make it clear that my comments are not directed at any specific individual, Graham or any councillor's CEO, Latrobe City Management or staff, I want to emphasise my tone may be robust. It's a serious issue at hand and I'm clarifying that my comments are not personal attacks and that my tone is a reflection of the gravity of the situation rather than any ill intent towards anybody. Okay, thank you. I believe that the creation of a position document should ideally involve input from various stakeholders, including local residents and community members who will be directly affected by the decision. Environmental experts and scientists who can provide insights into the potential impacts of the environment, soil and wildlife, particularly in the south ward that I represent, which may as a result of this closure face an increase in pine plantations affecting both the residents' and wildlife's wellbeing and safety. There should be, of course, the representatives from relevant government agencies responsible for land management, forestry and fire prevention and fighting, but this must include the local firefighting level who have experienced directly on the ground in their regions from the CFA in their terrain. Fire scene investigators and the private logging companies who have great experience in firefighting. These people to me should be all helping with the creation of a position document. Local businesses and industry representatives involved in the production and use of hardwood such as Gippsland, local furniture manufacturers, we haven't discussed that. Flooring companies for hardwood floors in residential or commercial spaces, cabinet makers, construction companies such as for framing, decking, creating architectural features, woodworking shops for craft sculptures or decorative items, musical instrument makers that use hardwood for guitars and violins etcetera. Artisans and craftsmen, some of those lovely things at the markets, handcrafted items like cutting boards, bowls or wooden sculptures, they're all affected. Boat builders, boat builders can use hardwood for constructing their boat frames, decks, interior finishes and restoring of old boats. Joinery and millwork businesses for the creating of customer doors, windows, mouldings, other architectural woodwork. Restoration of antique shops, with this goes any restoration from the early Australian art of furniture. So I just think that it should be broader, all of these businesses should be considered and at the table. And then elected officials and policymakers who have the authority to make decisions and implement policies. But for that to be effective, it should be those who are demonstrated supporters of the native hardwood timber industry and chosen by the people that are affected, directly elected by them, I believe that's the channel it should go through. Logistics companies should be at the table, they've greatly been impacted by the hardwood pellet production ceasing. So they need to be there and discuss the economic impact that's had on logistics as well. And in conclusion, it is important to ensure that the process of developing a position statement or document is inclusive, transparent and democratic. Allowing the people directly and indirectly affected to have a say in the decision making process is crucial to ensure that their concerns and perspectives are taken into account. And therefore, that's the reason that I'm going to abstain because I think it's not the ideal channel for a position document to be constructed, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson, councillor Harriman, you're up next.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I will support this and my apologies to Graham because I caught up with some timber workers and contractors last week and I caught up with them again on Sunday afternoon. And I actually went through this with them, there's two points they love in this, Graham. Two point A, the option of harvesting continuing until the original announced cessation date of twenty thirty. And two D, And two D, the financial circumstances of contractors of, affected by the premature cessation of native timber. Harvesting and sus- suggestions of appropriate compensa- compensation. To put this in perspective, Madam Mayor, I was at the Australian Forestry Contractors Association dinner last November. I was on a table of ten, two couples, four people, sitting at that table, out of a, out of a group of three hundred. Both had bought machinery valued at over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They bought that May last year, they hadn't been able to use it. They had sold their existing equipment, they had bought this new equipment, they had gone through. Their financial savings and were at the point of selling their houses. Having spoken to them then, I've caught up with, with one of those couples again on the weekend and some other contractors in the area. Their biggest concern is there's no times on this, there's no directive to get it done quickly. Because if it's not done quickly, it's a waste of time as far as they're concerned. Um, they, they wanted probably something a bit, bit harder, and I understand this is, this is what we came up with and it's been discussed. For a couple of weeks by councillors and, and I understand where it's come from and it's come from a good place. But as I pointed out, this is very much a send it to a committee, no timeframe, bring it back from a committee. Um, then we'll, then we'll have a talk to, you know, some people and, and get an idea and we'll sit round the table. We'll all argue for six or twelve months and then we'll come back with a joint position. I will support it, um, as Graham mentioned, I did send him some figures, and I think this is relevant, Madam Mayor. When they looked at shutting down, um. Ash Timber, Australian Sustainable Hardwoods in Hayfield, four years ago, four and a half years ago. They did a study and found out that there were ten thousand downstream jobs in that. I've been talking to the contractors today, uh, yes, Sunday, and these are the figures that they've come up with. Hayfield, jobs lost, one thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Yarum, one thousand two hundred and thirty. Orbost, seven hundred and forty. Swift Creek, two hundred and seventy-eight. Latrobe City is over two thousand and growing. Now, I've already been, been contacted by twenty contractors. Each of whom employ over twenty-five staff that operate out of Latrobe City. That's just the ones that have bothered to contact me. It, it is a huge impost, Graham, I'll support it, I'd like to have. As I said, the, the industry would have liked to have seen some timeframes and that around it, um, just to get it done a bit quicker. But um, as I said, they love two A and they love two D, so thank you for putting it up, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Get mute and bounce back on again. Thank you councillor Harriman, councillors, anyone else who'd like to speak? Councillor Law.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, having worked in the joinery industry and been in the timber game for, for the last thirty-odd years, I have a very emotional attachment to the, the timber industry. Uh, my former secretary, uh, husband actually owned Sawmill, the Micas up at, um, Erica. So, um, we have a very deep understanding of this situation and, and the effects it does have on the whole communities and the people involved. Um, I think it's, it's, it's difficult for us as a, as a councillor. Where we are in an, in a no-win situation that, uh. We've got a government above us that have made a decision which is gonna, uh, which affects us all. Um, I don't, I believe what Graham is saying is correct, is that. We've probably got one chance at this of trying to get some, something out of it in a positive way, I can't see any positives at the moment. Other than the fact is that if we go in as a united front, um, that we may get some small wins for some small people. In some small communities and, uh, I feel for those people that have bought machinery and that they can't offload it. Or have got to move interstate to make it all work. Um, it is a very, very difficult situation and I can only feel for those people. That have been affected by it, but I believe what Graham is proposing is that we at least all band together. Put our arms around each other and just try and get something to happen for some of these people that need it the most. And I'm, I'm fully supportive of what Graham has put up tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Law, councillors, anyone else wish to speak? Councillor Clancy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I think that this is, uh, having read this and having it circulated throughout the, the last fortnight. Um, you know, I'm really, really comfortable and I certainly do take. Uh, councillor Ferguson's uh points up about who should be in, um, the, you know, creating a position document. But I, I think that position document, I'll just touch on that for a second. The idea of having a position document is really, really important and I, I think that it, it shouldn't take very long because I think we know what the position is. I think that we know what our community wants, we, we've certainly heard that in the, in the last, uh, eight weeks since the. Uh, uh, state budget was handed down and then this, this news was, uh, given to us about the. The bringing forward of this closure. We know, we know what, what the position is, we know what the. Position of our workers are, we know the position of, of contractors and as councillor Harriman's talked about. Position of, of contractors who have gone out on a limb and, and spent money. Uh, what I like about what councillor Middlemiss is putting up here is it is a sensible and structured approach. And, and councillor Middlemiss's words around, you know, uh, marching in the street and getting, getting things done as or whatever. I, I'm not sure if the time is done for that, I think there is still time for that to happen. But a detailed case is really, really important. And a combined approach is really, really important and, and this combined approach is via one Gippsland. And I think that that's something that's really important, but this idea of a position document, it needs to happen now. And at the last council meeting, uh, in June, uh, when we discussed this, which councillor Harriman put, put up a notice of motion. I said then, this needs to happen now, this is something that we can't dilly-dally around, we can't form another committee. We can't form another group of people to work through what our position is, we know what our position is. We need to support our workers, we need to do it in a very structured and sensible way. So they have ongoing employment for their families into the future. Now, also since the last council meeting, and, and you know, you would have been living under a rock if you hadn't seen. Social media and news outlets saying the things that, that, that this council was almost. Responsible single-handedly for the closure of this, this industry, it's not. As, as someone's just said, this is a decision of government that is above us. And what we're trying to do as a local government authority is trying to support our workers and I think that this sensible approach. Is to advocate, is to talk to government and talk to them in a way that they will sit at the table with us to ensure that we can get the best. Possible outcome, and as point A and point D, as councillor Harriman said, are very, very strong points. They're the sort of things that we should be sitting down at the table and talking to, the people who are making these decisions and saying. Enough is enough, we actually need this to happen and we need it to happen now. And I like this sensible approach, I like this combined approach, I like a detailed case. And I think it's very important that we not only support this motion that's been put before us, but we do it with haste. And we do it immediately.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillors, do I have any other speakers in relation to this before I go to councillor Gibson, who is reserved? Yep, councillor Gibson, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, look. Oh, I note the intent with this motion. I don't agree with all of it, um. At the last council meeting, we actually got rid of. The Transition Task Force, now that was put in over two years ago. And it had even more than what is being put in or asked for in this motion. And i- if we go and buy that this motion was going to, um, help solve it and it's the great vehicle, well. Why four weeks ago did most of the councillors around this table? Vote to scrap the Transition Task Force because the state government wouldn't come to the table? Whereas everybody else was round the table, bipartisan federally and the opposition statewide. I. Our position is known, I, I take note that that's what one of our, um, councillors said. So why are we worrying about a document with one Gippsland? That's why I put my motion up, we haven't got time to stuff around because. This is people's livelihoods that we are dealing with. I, I disagree with, um, one of my councillors about, you know, you shouldn't stand up and. Play nicely, well, sometimes you have to make a stand. Now, the decision that has gone down is going to affect thousands of people's lives. We're not playing games here, that's what it's going to do. There's businesses and as a result, there will be so much mental health and there will be suicide. So, to. To do a position document and then hopefully make representation, I'm sorry. We need to do more. I, I, some of it, I, I agree with, but. The time for pussyfooting around is not now, we. Our community deserves so much more. There is people's lives at stake, not just their livelihoods. And we can't sit back and, oh, well, we'll do a position document. I, I take note of the intent and that's lovely, but. No, we need to do more, which is why I said, um, why I've put my motion up to go straight to the top. So, look, as I say, some of this I agree with. But to just do a position document, and especially after the last council meeting. Most of you round this table said, oh no, get rid of your transition task force, when. That was exactly what it was there for and it had much more than this there and you said, get rid of it. So, look, I, I, I'm sorry, but. Now is not the time to do just a position document, thank you.
Councillor Middlemiss, you have the option to close.
No, he doesn't.
Oh, sorry, we do have an opposition, that was a reserved, sorry councillor Middlemiss.
Um, if I could just make a point, Madam Mayor, councillor Gibson just spoke against it.
Yes.
I reserved, be, and through the, but we shouldn't be debating that.
You, you actually spoke against the motion.
I reserved and.
Doesn't matter whether you reserved, you spoke against the motion.
I, I'm not having a debate with you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you spoke in opposition. And I know that you didn't list it as opposition, you did speak in opposition, I think the question, which was my point of giving councillor Middlemiss. The right of reply, um. Councillor Middlemiss, I'm actually happy to extend that on the nature of the clarity of. The opposition although fundamentally not stated at the front end, would you like to take the option?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead. We've got you on mute councillor Middlemiss.
How's that, that make better? Uh, some criticism around time factors, et cetera. Basically, One Gippsland is driven by six CEOs, council CEOs and six mayors. They can drive this very, very quickly, this can be done very, very quick, quickly. As far as community involvement is concerned, there's six councils, I would expect much of the kind of input. That councillor Ferguson spoke of, would actually come through the councils, not a huge body of input. What I was looking for was some, some timber industry and all the relevant players within the timber industry. To put, put their positions on it, this can be done quite quickly. This is not just a committee that can let go, the, the, if it's done quickly and it's up to the six. Gippsland councils to do that, if it's done quickly, it can then be put to the, to the, uh, federal and state government. To requi- uh, to request negotiations with them, I don't see this in any way as a delaying tactic whatsoever. So, as far as I'm concerned, this can go ahead very quickly if One Gippsland agrees to it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, uh, we'll put this one to the vote. Uh, votes in favour. Councillor Law, councillor Howe, councillor Lund. Councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss and myself. Those against. Those abstaining. Councillors Gibson and Ferguson, the notice of motion is therefore carried. Um, councillors, just to be clear. If the exercising of the seconding of a motion is being used in opposition to, I'm gonna take it as opposition from this point forward and allow. Closure just out of the fairness of debate, um, the intention of our governance rules is to allow a seconder who is in support of. And the reserve option is to allow them to speak before the closure. But if it's going to be used in another way, then I will allow the opportunity for a reply. And I have asked the officers to seek clarification in relation to practices and the truth, and exercise around the intent. And the way that council does normally engage in this, I can't stop it, but I can certainly inform a process. That provides a level of equity of reply. So moving on to twelve two, job losses in the paper industry commencing on page four hundred and seventeen of the agenda. Councillor Middlemiss, this is yours also.
Yes, moving, thanks.
Moving, do I have a seconder on this one, please? Councillor Laura, I saw your hand up. Any opposition councillors? No opposition on this one, councillor Middlemiss, back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, um. I have seen what the state government is proposing, uh, for the, and I must say that when I wrote this motion. I thought there were about three hundred and fifty plus jobs lost in the paper industry. Uh, I think that figure is probably a hundred, at least a hundred higher than that, it's very hard to get a finger on. Uh, the people, um, harvesting and transporting, um, logs in and paper out. So the figure, the supply chain figure might be much higher, um. The proposal that the state government is acting on at the moment, and I believe they have another, um, range of proposals they will come out with very shortly. Seemed to me to be modelled around what was done, um, in the case of the Hazelwood closure. And there are many in the community, myself included, who didn't think the Hazelwood closure was handled. As well as it could be, um, I, I'll, I'll be quite honest, that, that the, the. Outcome of the closure of the jobs around the Maryvale Mill, I do not want to see the outcome being. A performing arts centre, a basketball stadium, I want to see it, if it's all possible. In new industry being created who can employ these workers. Now, all, all along during the Hazelwood process, um, the government went its own way. And we have our own economic development department here. And we are largely a little more successful often than the state government. In attracting interest in businesses that might come here and. Probably the most recent example is the unmanned aerial vehicles, the drones. Um, which were attracted here solely by the efforts of our own, um, our own economic development team. Now, I am aware that at any given time, we have a number of businesses that are interested in coming to the valley. Nearly always, it's the nature of the beast these days, that they will want some assistance. What I'm suggesting here is we need to table all that information. With the, uh, Latrobe Valley Authority, with Regional Development Victoria and with the relevant minister. Saying here are companies that will come here, they might want a million dollars to come, they might want two million dollars to come, they might just want the road paved. I don't know, so that the government is aware of the knowledge and context that we have in addition to what they're doing. Because I believe with cooperation with our people. We can actually attract a number of jobs a lot sooner than through the state government's processes. So all I'm suggesting here is let's go to the state government and say, this one will come with this assist. This one will come with this assistance, because in all this, the real key is getting jobs for those people. Who are now out of work at Maryvale, thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law.
Always there, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillors, other speakers, anyone else want to jump in the mix on this one? Councillor Ferguson and councillor Howe, I want to saw some other hands, but they may have been quick. I'll go for councillor Ferguson, councillor Howe, and then I'll come back on the call, then councillor Harriman, councillor Ferguson.
Um, I'd just like to give a reason why I don't agree. Um, I'd just like to give a reason why I don't agree, just, and, but Graham has touched on this anyhow, that he feels that he's underestimated the jobs. Um, so, and this isn't directed at anyone, just so, so you know that, but I believe it does need to be researched a lot more to get an accurate job loss figure. Um, that's probably the reason I wouldn't support this. Um, yeah, so I'm not sure, if I can ask a question by you, Madam Mayor, is it able to be adjusted to a more realistic figure, um, or estimate?
Question in relation to, let me just check this against the governance rules, councillor. Think because it indicates an indicative base figure plus, it's not a completeness of a figure, but that's at your discretion as to whether or not you choose to support that on the basis of the information provided. Um, my read of it is it's three hundred and fifty plus, how far plus? Is in the quantum of your determination as to whether or not you feel that's reasonable as a presentation, you could speak to it and indicate almost a, a conditional support for, would not be uncommon in these sorts of circumstances, but it's completely at your discretion. Does that, does that help? It's, it was, it was four hundred and forty-nine jobs exactly, and that was a matter of debate, that there is a little bit of fluidity in this, given that had plus.
Yeah.
Hope that helps.
I'll have a think about that, thank you.
Uh, did, okay, and feel free to wander back if that's, um, where you feel on that, because we sort of got halfway through that one. Okay, councillor Howe and then councillor Harriman.
Hey, thanks, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with what councillor Middlemiss was saying. Um, every month, as a council, we're approached by individuals and businesses with ideas and dreams of setting up in Latrobe City. Uh, we've got a hydrogen plant ready to go out at Llangollen, hundreds of jobs on offer. Uh, we just need the support of, of the, um, state government. We've got plans to build a motorsport facility, including a large research and development precinct, um, we just need the state government's support. Uh, we've got possibilities for more industry out at our airport. What do we need? We just need the, the, uh, the help and funding from the state government. Got carbon capture and storage, um, at Llangollen, which is successful, opens up another range of, of, um, industry where they can use our coal, which is still our greatest asset in Latrobe City. They can use their coal, um, and have it be, um, have carbon neutral, um, carbon neutral industries. So, I think the best, this is the best thing, let's work with the state and federal government, let's identify the, the opportunities that are gonna give us the biggest bang for our buck, the most jobs, the appropriate jobs for what we need, for the people that are losing them. Um, there's no point giving, giving a machinist a job as a barista, he, he's not gonna enjoy it and he's not, he's not gonna be able to do it well. We need like-for-like jobs, we need good paying jobs. Um, so, yeah, a hundred percent behind this one. Good idea councillor Middlemiss.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I do support this motion. Um, as I've stated before, the, the figures I've got are over two thousand local jobs, not, not three fifty. Um, that takes in all the contractors, whether they be contractors harvesting, whether they be contracted into run logistics and trucking, whether that be, they be contracted in to supply machinery. Um, so it's gonna have a massive effect on this economy, and it's gonna have a massive effect on the jobs market. Not just those in the jobs market, but the role on effect after it. We've already seen the effect of the native, native timber industry closure, the effect it's had at Maryvale, the effects on Maryvale will continue to grow. The effects on our community, whether it be through companies providing tyres, whether it be through companies providing harvesting and trucking equipment, so your, 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 your king cats, your caterpillars, your, your John Deeres. All those people are gonna be affected. Now, they may not close, but they're gonna lose, if they've got thirty people working from them, they might lose five. It's gonna affect the companies that provide fuel, diesel, food. You know, when, when you've got, um, trucks, drivers heading out at three o'clock in the morning to head to harvesting zones, when you've got harvesters heading out at four o'clock, they're going and buying their brew, they're going and buying their lunch, it'll affect, you know, how many newspapers get sold, how many, how many hotdogs are sold, how many big M's are bought. It's gonna have a massive effect across the community that we won't understand until probably twelve months after it happens. Councillor Middlemiss is right, we, we don't wanna go through what we went through with Hazelwood again. We now in the valley, because there were no jobs provided for those boiler makers, for those fitters and turners, we have a skill shortage in the valley. You cannot get a boiler maker for love or money. And the problem we face is that it's great that we've got companies coming into the valley, but we're looking at people employed in the timber industry who are outdoor workers, who work with their hands and who aren't high-tech. Now, we saw when Tasmania closed its timber industry, that they tried to push them all into ecotourism. Within twelve months, not one timber worker had a job in the ecotourism industry, all the businesses that started up had gone under, and the one who was employed as a barista was out of work. So, we need to find jobs that are suited to their skills. That means we have to chase industries that are suited to their skills. In the case of the mill workers, it's a manufacturing base, we need a manufacturing industry. When we look at, at the logistics companies with the truck drivers, we don't want to send them in a state. We don't wanna have them home one day a week, or once a fortnight. We want jobs that are local, and when it comes to the harvesters and the contractors and all those other people, it's hands-on type work. They're the type of jobs we need to chase, that's what we need to do, and hopefully, our economic development team is looking at jobs suitable to the local community, not bringing new people into the area. We've gotta do that, but we have to provide local jobs as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman. Councillor Ferguson? I'm sorry, councillor, I'll look at councillor Ferguson, and I'm about to say councillor Gibson. Apologies, must be getting late. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I'm, I'm not councillor Ferguson. Look, I, I'm happy to support this, and that's exactly what I would as, expect us to do in relation to my motion. We need to have the, the difference, um, oh, um, we have so many different, um, sorry, yes, it is late night, doesn't help when you've got the flu. Um, we have so many different opportunities that we could utilise to help our economy to transform our economy, so we're not left as a basket case. So, I, I, I'm happy to support this because that's exactly what we need to take and speak to the Prime Minister and the Premier, because it is serious, although I would love it if councillor Middlemiss changed the three fifty, but, um, I'm not gonna die in a ditch for that.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Uh, any other councillors which should speak? Councillor Ferguson, I wanna come back and give you the option, because I'm gonna take what you said at the front end as a question. Did you want the option to speak?
Okay, I'm satisfied there's enough recognition that, that it could be in the thousands and more realistic. So, given that the plus represents that, I'm now comfortable with that, thank you.
Fantastic, no problem at all. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak? To make sure I haven't missed anybody. Okay, I think we've covered that off. Um, we didn't have opposition on this occasion, I don't think anyone spoke in that regard, so we don't have a right of reply. I am gonna put the motion to the vote. Those in favour. Oh, stop, stop.
I seconded, I got the right, I did, I reserve.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, try it, yes, yes.
Uh, that's okay.
I'm putting my reserves, no, I don't mind.
No, 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 it's, it's fine, like, I mean, we're.
Moving, so that if nothing else, that's good. Councillor Law then.
Uh, it's, it's good that everyone's having some discussion, because it is important, that's what, that's what we're here for. And, uh, commend Graham for putting this up. I think, I think what, as a council group, we've gotta clearly understand is that we're an advocacy group. Um, as, as a business, like, we budget to surplus three to eight million dollars per year. So, we've got no money whatsoever to support major businesses coming into town. We are here per, primarily to advocate to the state government, give as many ideas as we can to them. They're the ones that have got the, the, the dollars, the state and the feds. So, what Graham has said is, let's give it to the people who have got the money. We push some, we, we push the issues through, that where we see that we can get some traction. And, uh, at the end of the day, they need to provide the money, all we're providing is the resources of council to help facilitate that move to the valley ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Law. On that basis, and again, we haven't had opposition, but we will put it to the vote. Uh, those in favour, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Ferguson, councillor Harriman, councillor Clancy, councillor Middlemiss and myself, one is carried unanimously. I note you councillor Gibson, this is twelve three, this is the Native Timber Industry Transition Meeting commencing on page four eighteen of your agendas, this was a notice of motion brought by councillor Gibson. Councillor Clancy is heading out into the waiting room and we will then move into this, councillor Gibson, I note you as moving.
Yes, please.
I.
Um, well, before we go any further, I've lost everyone.
Okay, can you hold for a moment and see if you can manage to overcome that?
I can only see the shared screen with the notice of motion.
I'm not seeing a change, but I'm on a different device to you, I believe. Just hold for a moment, everyone, I'm just awaiting an I T response for you.
They can jump on mine and do it if they wish.
It's gonna get the I T department to give you a call. If you could mute yourself councillor Gibson, and then take the call from Carl, that would be helpful. Just going to, not actually journey as such, we're just gonna sit tight for a bit. Can you place us just on hold by governance team? And we'll just sort this technology out and we'll come back in. Councillor Middlemiss?
Um, sorry, I just, it's getting so late, isn't it? Um, so we're in a German at the moment, aren't we?
Let me check, let's see if we get this point, sit tight for a moment.
Yep.
Officers, can I confirm are we offline? Welcome back to everyone, we've overcome, uh, those issues, councillor Gibson, back to us, and we are at twelve three. This is the Native Timber Industry Transition Meeting commencing on page four hundred and eighteen. I've noted councillor Gibson as the mover and the person who has brought this nomination. Do I have a second for councillor? Do I have a second for councillor Harriman as the second? Do I have opposition councillors? Councillor Howe? Okay, we'll go up to the top councillor Gibson, councillor Middlemiss is waving a hand.
Sorry, sorry, Madam Mayor, look, I wanted, why I put my hand up is I wanted to ask a question if that's okay by you? Just in clarification of the motion.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, okay, I noticed that the um attended joint summit, blah blah blah, to discuss the future and transition failure of the Latrobe Valley Authority to deliver a final transition plan and to develop a strategy, blah 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 blah. My understanding and just my general inquiries around the traps is that the LVA is only a matter of weeks away from delivering a transition plan, i- is that your understanding?
Uh, thanks councillor Middlemiss and again, given councillor Ferguson's question, when I was sitting as the Chair of One Gipsland, there was also a role that sat in relation to a PCG role, which was just a general feedback loop that the CEO and I sat in as well, we're not there anymore. Um, well, I'm not in that role, uh, Mr CEO, can I ask you a question on that? Because I haven't been in there for a bit. Um, so you're much closer to this and I think Mr Ellis is our representative in that space, so you're going to have much more contemporary information than I've had, I've been out for a number of months.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, um, the deputy mayor and I actually also attended a meeting on Thursday um, with the LVA and the One Gipsland group, um, just to understand the status of that plan, they advised uh, through their CEO that the work they have undertaken on the transition plan has been completed, um, it's still to be presented to cabinet and finally signed off in that respect, but the LVA have said their work's completed, they're just waiting for the final sign off, which they indicated at last week's meeting, that's a couple of weeks away in their view, um, so that's the current status of it, councillors and Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, councillor Middlemiss, okay, so we'll go back to where we were councillor Gibson, you're our mover and our first speaker.
Okay. Twenty seventeen, Latrobe Valley was shocked by the announcement of Hazelwood's quick closure. In response, the premier announced the Latrobe Valley Authority. Along with other community members, I was willing to give it a go to see what the authority could come up with to help save us. Six years on, the answer is in, the Latrobe Valley Authority has spent a swag of money on community and sporting infrastructure with no adopted transition plan for our future. In so doing, it has failed our community to attract permanent ongoing jobs in new stable industries that will put bread and butter on the tables of valley families into the future. Not short term jobs. Twenty twenty-three, more shock announcements, the beginning of the end of the native timber industry and part of the pulp and paper industry. We were told a power station closure being brought forward. In the background, the ATO, ASIC and Centrelink are flagging the loss of yet another thousand jobs from the valley. You can also forget the two hundred new jobs promised for the mall Gov Hub. Instead, one hundred and forty state government jobs are being lifted this year from the housing call centre in the Moi Newborough area to the mall Gov Hub, covering up another transition failure. In response, Minister Shing tells us the Latrobe Valley Authority is producing, and I quote, thirty-two jobs by Gipslanders for Gipslanders. That's not my idea of success or a just transition for the whole valley. It is only for those lucky few working there. Calculations show six million four hundred and seventy thousand is being spent this year by the Victorian Government on LVA's thirty-two jobs and related on costs, averaging around two hundred thousand per LVA job this year. The LVA has seven hundred and thirty thousand left in the kitty to spend on Latrobe Valley transition, the equivalent of the payroll of roughly three LVA jobs, some of this money already spent in two programmes, leaving little or nothing left to do the work we desperately need as the valley is bleeding jobs, losing our industrial base, which sees the destruction of future job opportunities. Sorry, I ha- it's hard to speak with the flu. Losing our industrial base, which sees the destruction of future job opportunities for our entire community without that base. We are drowning in unemployment, family breakup and violence, poverty, criminality and despair. This is the reason my motion demands an urgent meeting with the Prime Minister and Premier because Houston, we have a problem and we have it now. The first thing we need to do is all admit we have failed the Latrobe Valley and acknowledge the seriousness of the problem in order to take the urgent steps in fixing the problem. Our community deserve an urgent meeting with the Prime Minister and Premier not over lunch or dinner, but a proper, serious meeting that is transparent, minuteed and reported back to our community in detail, setting out the nature of the problem and the steps that we together are going to take to fix the problem. The future is not rosy, so councillors, will you put party affiliations aside and vote for our valley's future, please?
Councillor Ferguson, can I now go to councillor Harriman or would you like to reserve?
I think I'll reserve Madam Mayor.
No problem, please wave around if I forget, um, councillor Howe in opposition. And then I'll come to you councillor Ferguson, you're.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think, I think it's, it's safe to say all councillors share councillor Gibson's despair and frustration about the decimation of our coal and timber industries in Latrobe City. Uh, the consequence has been substantial job losses, leaving families helpless and businesses struggling to survive. We all agree as a council, our role is, is advocating for our community. Uh, what we do disagree on is, is which road we need to take. Um, I don't believe this motion is the answer. I don't think we have much hope of the premier of Victoria and our prime minister attending a summit in Latrobe City. Uh, the state government has stated again and again through my time as a councillor that any economic development will be directed through the LVA, so I don't believe criticizing him will help our cause at all. Uh, regarding the LVA's plan, we've just heard, it's, it is completed and is due to go to cabinet next month. Um, passing this motion will not help anybody who's lost their job or anyone who's going to lose their job or any struggling business. It'll be good reading in the express, um, but I think that's all it'll achieve. Uh, Madam Mayor, may I foreshadow a motion in the event that this motion is lost?
Uh, yeah, certainly, I note that.
Uh, what I hope to offer as an alternative motion is to provide some hope for our community. Um, if given the opportunity, I'll have a motion that requests a meeting with the relevant state and federal government departments to have a meaningful conversation about a coordinated approach to the transition of our city's economy. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe, so everyone, scribbling this down, these meetings run on post-it notes, okay. There's what I, okay, councillor Ferguson, you're next up.
Uh, thank you, um. In the way I perceive this and the way I'll put this forward is I feel we've been through departments, we've been through those roads, I'm in support of this motion. I think the time has come to just get some immediate action. Um, now, I feel if something's a transition and it's just it's crucial to ensure that the transition is fair and inclusive, taking into account full impacts on workers and communities. Attendees of a summit of this sort and our elected servants should work closely with the unions for affected workers. However, for the outlying rural towns, I cannot stress this enough, they must recognise that people's culture, history and lives and future are in the lands on which they live and their communities and that by severing that and looking for uh, employment elsewhere, they're destroying their traditions, culture and valuable generational knowledge. And I must express this, that I feel that is an ongoing um thing that I've had when I've been talking to, to um, people in the timber industry, is just that there is not enough respect um, for their for their lives, for their families, for their culture and for their generational knowledge is thrown under a bus like it's not relevant because they may not have a PhD. So I feel that we need to have an approach with this that is going to take those things into consideration with the transition. And I also think um, that, you know, we look at sustainability as a key focus when you're promoting sustainable development. But I really think if they do come to this summit, and I, I plead that they will, um, that they should recognise and learn of the modern sustainable timber industry firsthand. Listen to those who are on the ground, who walk through the bush, developing the regeneration of the forests instead of relying on intermediary bodies to deliver to reports and going by that. I think that they would win the people so much if they could walk through the bush, see it with their own eyes, learn from all the logging companies who are regenerating, doing seed banks and amazing environmental work. And if that's not in the picture, then I can't see the, how a transition can be just. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson, uh, councillors, any other speakers before I go councillor Middlemiss and then councillor Law?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, um. I have some reservations about this motion again. It's shouty, uh, I don't think the Prime Minister and the premier will respond to urgently immediately, uh, from Latrobe City, I think we need to go with a proposal to them, can we meet, et cetera, I think it's in fact, I know what the reaction of the Victorian premier will be, he'll say we're about to deliver a transition plan uh, from the LVA, it's only a week or two away. In fact, I'd like to put this aside until that plan came out, we can have a look at it and say if it's like we expect it will be, it's a dud, uh, or, okay, that, that'll do, um. I'm not sure that this kind of blunt request produces the results we want. Um, I think the chances of getting the Prime Minister and the premier in the room with all our councillors uh, to discuss the transition failure of the Latrobe Valley Authority, which has nothing to do with the federal government, by the way, um, is going to get what we need, so I have major reservations about this, I'm sitting here thinking okay, it's a bit like um, my reaction last month, um, condemning, shouting, will it get us anywhere? Uh, councillor um, Gibson asks us to put aside our, our party affiliations. I'm not sure that that means that I put mine aside to vote with somebody else's. Um, if you look through this council, there's a lot of party affiliation here, so don't go playing the, the, the party affiliation card. I'm not, I'm not confident this would achieve what we're trying to achieve. Uh, we voted the transition plan or the transition proposal out last time because simply one of the governments had refused to be part of it. It had failed, so we've got to find something that'll work a little better, uh, I'm not sure this is it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, um, when I applied to COVID and that, we did have a meeting with Daniel Andrews um, as a collective. Um, I think it, it, it was pretty clear that uh, he stated, um, without doubt that everything was going to go through the Latrobe Valley Authority. And I have no doubt that uh, his interest uh, is not with us, but with the Latrobe Valley Authority. So I feel that the transition document is probably the most important part of this whole um, puzzle. And, and I agree with Graham, and that's what was my thoughts were, is that to make this decision at this point in time until we actually see what the, the LVA has come up with, he's trying to, he's preempting or poking the ball in some way, so I'd be, uh, I, I want to wait and see that transition piece, because I'd like to go back with something that is tangible and is something that we can actually get or want, you know, rather than just, you know, have a summit uh, without a prescribed outcome, we know what the outcome we want to have, but how are we going to get there? And I'd like to see that transition document, so hopefully we can get um, pull that apart to get something that will work for Latrobe City Council to get some jobs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thor, uh, was there anyone else who needed to speak, wanted to speak before I go to councillor Harriman who reserved and then give councillor Gibson the opportunity to close. Councillor Harriman, to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, um, I'll actually address some of the issues raised by some of our councillors saying let's go through the LVA and government departments. Let me explain what that achieved last time when we had Hazelwood closed without notice. We got five hundred jobs at Sea Electric. Now, that's providing a great employment op- well, hang on, no, it's not because they didn't arrive. And then there was the two hundred high-tech jobs at the Innovation Centre at Gipsdale. But then they disappeared and we got a call centre instead, that's what the sort of jobs you're going to get. If you're not going to stand up for your community and shout at the premier and the prime minister until they come down here, we've had various prime ministers from both sides of politics go to the Hunter Valley when they stood up and yelled. When they said, we're not putting up with this, we need help, we need to do the same. We're not being acknowledged now, what have we achieved out of the LVA in the six years it's been here? What jobs have they provided? What ongoing businesses are here because of them? What massive employment have we got for our local workers? We're, we're, we're over, we're in double digit unemployment figures across most of our cities, malls devastated. Going to a government department is like no different, and I had this put to me the other day, no different than getting Sir Humphrey to speak to Minister Hackton on yes, Prime Minister, because that's the result we're going to get. If we do not go to the leadership and tell them how serious we are and stand up for our community and let our community know that we're willing to do whatever it takes, then we're letting our community down. Why bother going to a minister or a bureaucrat who's going to, or the LVA, who'll have to go to a minister, who'll have to go to a, a, a bureaucrat, who'll then do a report that'll then end up on a table that won't be read for twelve months? Put it on the table that we're not happy, go to the premier, go to the prime minister, make them aware we're not happy that we want an outcome now, that they need to pay attention to what's happening here. Ford did it, the workers at Ford jumped up and down like there's no tomorrow when the car industry closed. And what result did they get? They got jobs put down there, they got industry moved there, they got meaningful employment there. We need to do the same, the time for saying, let's go to ministers and let's go through government departments, we've found out Sea Electric and the high-tech jobs proved, there's seven hundred jobs we haven't got because we took them at face value. It's time to call them down here, sit them down face to face, let them know we're not happy and stand up for those poor blokes out at Hazelwood that still don't have a job and the guys at Maryvale and the native timber industry that are facing the same future. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman, councillor Gibson, you have the opportunity to close.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This one you forgot councillor Harriman, it's Steel Vision. LVA brought Steel Vision and how much, how many jobs is there? How much did it cost? Now, I can't say what we all said about the transition plan because it was in a closed session. But I have grave concerns about that now. Talking about not criticising and otherwise we won't get anything, well, what have we got? We have got serious unemployment, we have serious issues with oh, so many things, including the um, crime, including violence. You, it goes on and on and on, I am not doing anything else but standing up for this community, we're not going to a department. We're going straight to the top now. I, I believe that our prime minister and our premier are there for the people. And that's what we're asking them to do, to stand with us and be here for our people more than Ford, more than the Hunter Valley, because we've got three power stations going, we have the timber industry going and the list goes on, it is now, we haven't got time to play yes minister and wait for different committees and reports and reports and reports, we don't have time to stuff around, it is now. This is not a blunt request, this is asking our prime minister and our premier urgently to come here because it is urgent now. I won't say that this prime minister and this premier went to um, Hunter Valley. I won't say that this Prime Minister and this Premier went to um Hunter Valley or um Geelong, but the powers that be went there. We didn't, they didn't stuff around with government departments. They went to the top. And they actually got somewhere. Our people deserve us going to the top. Because they're our people. Are we gonna stand up for them or are we gonna say, oh, no, we'll we'll go and do a go to the department, go to the L V A? Well, they've stuffed up Sea Electric, they've stuffed up Steel Vision and the list goes on. But we'll do that. Our community deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Uh councillors, we've had speakers. Uh I think I've allowed everyone the opportunity. I just wanna make sure I don't wanna miss any credit in the mix. Yep, okay, I've got everyone there still. Okay, councillors, we will put uh the notice of motion to the vote. Those in favour, councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Harryman. Those against, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law and myself. The notice of motion is lost. I foreshadowed, uh noting councillor Howe. Do you have a foreshadowed norm to provide to the governance team so they can list it for everyone and make it available? Or do you require a brief adjournment?
Should be ready to go, Madam Mayor.
Just give everyone the opportunity to read this. I get on the basis of that you've still got L V A one of those mentions. Mister CEO, I don't, I'm not privy to all of the detail. I'm assuming councillor Clancy is still um conflicted in relation to this norm as presented. Okay. Sorry, it was provided to the CEO rather than to me.
Yes, that's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, just don't wanna exclude anybody when they shouldn't be now. All right, has anyone had a chance to have a read? Anyone need any further time? No? Okay. Uh councillor Howe noting you in relation to moving this one. Uh do I have a second, uh councillors? Councillor Law. Councillor Howe, over to you.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Um as of
All right.
Sorry?
No, my fault. I started before we revert the clock. Do we have opposition? It was me. I'm rushing ahead. I'm scribbling notes here on a different part of the page. Councillor Harryman, thank you. Sorry councillor Howe. Please start again.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um as I previously said, we all agree we need to do something. We're all here to advocate for our for our community, for our um people that are losing their jobs, for the businesses. We ju- we just disagree slightly on the on the best um way forward. Um I think that this alternative motion, it's asking for the um appropriate state and federal governments to meet with our council representatives. Um so we can have meaningful discussions about the transition of our economy. What we need to ensure is that the the L V A's transition plan, our plan and the federal government's ideas are all aligned, we're all on the same page, moving in the right direction. We need to ensure we have adequate funding from um both levels of of government. And both levels of governments have policies that support our plans and our ideas. We do need new businesses and new industry Latrobe City to provide appropriate jobs and well-paying jobs to ensure our continued prosperity as a region. Um I believe this motion is a very good first step. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Law, uh sorry, yes, councillor Law, speaker reserve.
Reserve, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Harryman in opposition.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. As as I said in the past, we've seen the great job that the bureaucracy and the L V A have done with Sea Electric, with the High Tech Precinct, um with Steel Vision, that was a great one. You know, they they, how many businesses lost hundreds of thousands of jobs in that and we're gonna do it to them again. So there's a, there's a saying, doing the same thing again and expecting a different result. It's a definition of something. I won't go into it, so I'll get, I'll get pieved or I'll get in trouble if I do. What I will say, Madam Mayor, and I'll keep it fairly short. Sir Humphrey Appleby would be so proud. Here we are letting unelected bureaucracy decide our future when they stuffed it up in the past. We'll just do the same thing again. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I pity, I pity the people of Latrobe City.
Councillors. I think I've been fairly patient with the conduct of this meeting and the conduct outside of this meeting recently, and I intend to continue to be so. We are already holding these meetings online for a range of reasons, and I think the least that we can do is extend a level of courtesy and kindness to each other in the room. I'm very happy for people to disagree. I'm very happy for there to be very, very different views. What I don't want is for anyone to feel pressured or uncomfortable in the exercising of their different view or their vote. And it's probably the only thing I can do in relation to this room. So I appreciate the passion that you all feel for the different perspectives and I thank you for that. Um I think if we can just make way for people to be able to have their views and have their differences and explore them in an environment that's safely held, I would be appreciative of that. Thank you. Okay, so I had, uh just walking through this again. So I had councillor Howe moving, I had councillor Law seconding and reserving. Councillor Harryman has just spoken in opposition. I'm gonna go to councillor Middlemiss, I'll then go to councillor Lund. I'll then give any other councillors the opportunity to speak before coming back to councillor Law.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um I'll be brief. Uh I think it comes around the uh the ideas of courtesy. I think uh we must initially give both both governments the opportunity to discuss these matters with us and come up with a solution. It could be, I could even characterize this as a one-two step. We try this way. We try the normal relationship with two governments, we try the normal courtesies, we try the discussion. It might be that in two months' time, we're back here with the defeated motion up before it and we're all shouting for blood. I don't know, but I believe the way to deal with governments in the initial phase is a courteous approach to discuss these problems. We'll then share the answers with our community and see where we go from there. So um I'm quite comfortable with this as the first step required. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss. Uh councillor Lund.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge and thank councillor Howe for foreshadowing this alternative motion. I acknowledge and agree to the urgency that we are all under at the mo- at the moment, and I share the passion that our councillors, uh that my fellow councillors have for what, for our community um and the situation we are faced with. We need to be strategic and not reactive in response to changing indu- in in, sorry, in response to the changing industrial landscape. Support for workers is crucial and never more important, and it is vital we look for and provide pathways for respectful for communication and strengthening working relationships with our state and federal government counterparts. On that note, I'd like to acknowledge that our mayor, the C and the CEO headed the Latrobe City delegation attending the National General Assembly and the Australian Council of Local Government Forum in Canberra last month. One of the key outcomes was the continued advocacy for workers' transition and a focused effort with the delegation in our neighbouring shires. So gar- garnering support for a range of key actions that sit within our transition plans. I agree with councillor Howe, we haven't been um, we have been, sorry, we have been told repeatedly by the state government that the response to transition and the changing industry landscape uh will be directed through the Latrobe Valley authori- uh sorry, authority. The federal government has also launched the National Net Zero Authority that has been established to ensure workers, industries and communities that have powered Australia for generations can capitalise off the opportunities that clean energies, industries and other emergency industries bring. I believe councillor Howe's motion puts us in the front foot of a strategic working relationship with the relevant government authorities. And it will help to open the door to communi- of communications and keep our focus on action and outcomes for the authorities. This will also keep us at the decision-making tables with without making demands that I believe gives our community a false sense of hope and an unrealistic expectation of the outcome of the original norm. Uh 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 of the outcomes the original norm will be able to achieve. We must do everything we can to ensure a coordinated and strategic approach, approach is taken to transition. We need to have investment from state and federal government to support new industries, workers' transition and the growing needs of the region. A key element for us to have that success is an effective working relationship with all the relevant bodies involved and a coordinated response.
Thank you councillor Law. Uh councillors, do I have any other speakers? Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, yes, we all see that this is really important. We see it a bit differently though. Um I don't see urgently request as high-handed or a demand. We're requesting urgently because it deserves an urgent request. Support for workers, well, we we, as for trying this for a couple of months and then putting mine back up, we've been down this track before with Hazelwood. Uh do I mention the the different things again, whether it be Sea Electric, Steel Vision, you know? We've been down that track. It's not as if we haven't been down this track. It's not as if we haven't tried this. I'm not doing this because I feel like, oh, we'll just go and do that. No, we have tried the other way. And it didn't work. Ask the Hazelwood workers who aren't working or the ones who'd had to shift away. It didn't work. We need the head of the states and the federal government to come here or we'll go there or I don't, I don't care. We need them round the table with us. It is urgent for our community that we do this. They can it much better than we ever will be able to. Call on whoever in the government to do whatever, but they can make that call. But if we're relying on the track that we've already gone down, well, there's not even any money in the budget for the L V A to do anything with it. So we're going straight to the top because our community deserve it. It is too important to play games, especially when we have tried that in the past and it didn't work. If if we hadn't been down that track, yep, not a problem. But we have been down that track. And there were too many suicides then, and I'm not gonna stand back and pussyfoot around when that's what we're facing again.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, anyone else to speak before I go to councillor Law who reserved? Councillor Law.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh again, thank everybody for their passion in this. It's uh it is an emotive subject and we're all here trying to do the best we can for our community in the, in the best way that we see fit. Um. I understand uh where Dale's coming from. I I, when I first walked into the office of Sea Electric and met their CEO four years ago, there was no way knowing that I thought this, that would fly purely because it it lived on, on on funding from government handouts to make that business survive. So, yep, the government went down that path and it failed. It also went down the path of the high pre- high-tech precinct for putting um call centre jobs in place of uh high-tech jobs uh in that uh Tate building. Which is, which was very disappointing at the time. After we'd build up, we'd build up our hopes that they were going to transition to some, some type of high-tech. It's also apparent at the moment now that because of we've got so many call centres in Latrobe City at the moment, one, one of the call centres within Latrobe City is now outsourcing into Brisbane, setting up another office in Brisbane because they've run out of um the right clientele to service their call centre, which is disappointing. But the transition has to happen, we have other jobs. Um I think the, the learnings of the past from the state government where they've failed, and they clearly failed, um that we have to try and create something that is slightly different. Now, I understand what councillor Gibson is saying, but we've got to have an answer, but we need to know what the government is actually thinking. And then, then it's for us to a- advocate for our community on our behalf of what we see as the road forward as well. It's not just what the state government wants. We want them to provide the funding, but we need to advocate for our community on what we see as the best way forward. So I thank uh councillor Howe for moving this motion and everyone else's uh input because we're all here for the one reason. We're all here for the community, we're all here for jobs. We've just got to try and make it all happen the best way possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillors. Councillor Howe, uh you have the option to close.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um councillor Law took a, took a little bit of what I was gonna say, actually. Um we all need to, yeah, take a deep breath and remember, we are all, we're all here together, worth trying to work together to get the best outcome for our community. So which, whichever way this vote goes, uh when the meeting finishes tonight, whether you're, you're yelling out in frustration or you're yelling out in happiness or you're punching the wall or whatever you're doing, get it out of your system because tomorrow we all have to get together. We have to work together to 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 make sure that um, that we get, we get some benefits and and we get some great outcomes for our community. Um that's all I have there, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillors, uh we've had all of our speakers. We will now put the um foreshadowed motion to the vote. Uh those in favour, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law and myself. Those against, councillor Gibson, councillor Ferguson, councillor Harryman. The foreshadowed motion is therefore carried. Thank you councillors for working that through. Um just a few little things. I don't enter into debate, it is not my role. I'm very much here to run the process of the meeting and appreciate that conversation. Um but suffice to say, uh some of those engagements and conversations have already commenced in terms of our engagements and requests for meetings, but this will not stop us from continuing to do that work and I thank our team who've been looking to arrange those things as well. And we'll give councillors a further update on those in the coming days. Um councillors, I do need at this point to seek an extension as we've been here a little while. Councillor Gibson, thank you. Councillor Middlemiss, thank you for seconding. Um the nature of our rules is at some point, which I probably should have done a few minutes back, uh we need to extend that before we continue to move through. Uh councillors, we have uh two more notices of motion to work our way through. Um I will continue unless anyone needs a break. Yep, we'll keep moving through. Okay. Uh twelve four, this is the replacement of the Lord's oh, sorry, we're absent one. I need to get him back.
Uh Madam Mayor, if I might, um councillor Clancy has sent me his mes- a message that his uh computer was um in the middle of an update, unfortunately, but he is happy to to stay out for the minute. If it comes back online, he'll reach you.
We can either do that or we can um adjourn. We've had lots of adjournments tonight, so I can do another one if we need it. Do we wanna allow him the chance to come back through? Gray's gone till break. Okay, I think we're adjourning. I've lost Graham as well. Uh councillors, may I have an adjournment for five, please? Thank you councillor Harryman, thank you councillor Gibson. Um we'll just take five and see if we can find councillor Middlemiss and we'll try and find councillor. Welcome back, everyone. Uh, we're now moving on to item twelve point four, the replacement of the Lord's Prayer commencing on page. Four hundred and nineteen of the council agenda. This is a notice of motion brought by councillor Gibson. I note to councillor Gibson as the mover of this particular item, do I have a second place? Councillor Ferguson is the second on this one. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Lund in opposition. Councillor Gibson, back to you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Okay, it's a really simple motion. It's looking for options. Now, uh, as people may or may not know, that we stopped doing the Lord's Prayer. That we've done since Adam was a pup. Um. A few meetings ago, now. Different councils across Victoria do different things. We also have different, um, religions, uh, across the Trobe City. So, you know, it's just looking at options. Do we have a minute's silence? Do we have, um, the, all the different religions? Do we have Take It In Turn? Do we have a, a, a statement that we read out? You know, we're looking at options of what we do have. So it's inclusive, yes, I can say, yes, I, I am Christian and. Of course, I, I would love the Lord's Prayer, but not everybody is. And some are Muslims, some are, um. All types of religions and some aren't. So this is just looking at what can we do for all. Whether it is any of the above or something else. So it's just a report. Of options, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Ferguson, to speak or reserve?
Uh, speak, please.
Aye.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think it's a respectful, um, notice of motion and I'm in support of it because I think that everyone should be able to reflect. Or do some kind of custom that means something to them. But I have a few other reasons too, and I think it means a lot more to people than some may understand. Um, and I'd just like to, uh, run by those. So to some people, um, they may feel that they can seek, um, divine guidance and wisdom before making important decisions. Um, they might ask for clarity and discernment in order to make the best choices for our community that they serve. Um, it also fosters a sense of unity and cooperation among council members. It reminds them that they are working together for the common good. And encourages them to put aside personal agendas and work towards consensus. It may, uh, a reflection or a prayer, depending on what people are comfortable with. Um, helps council members to reflect on their moral and ethical responsibilities. It serves as a reminder to make decisions that are just, fair and in line with the values and principles they hold. Uh, a prayer, prayer or reflection again can be inclusive and respectful of the diverse beliefs and faiths. Traditions presented within the council and within our community. It can be structured in a way that allows individuals to pray according, or to pray or reflect. Their own religious or spiritual or personal beliefs. It could be a moment of silent reflection that accommodates those who do not adhere to any particular faith, and that is how it should be too. Overall prayer prior to council or reflection, you know, before meetings even. You know, before meetings even, like we do many customs at meetings. Provides a spiritual foundation, promotes unity and helps council members approach their work with a sense of humility. Moral grounding and respect for diverse beliefs and thoughts, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson, councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks madam mayor, question only, um unfortunately my printed copy doesn't have the uh. This motion in it and I can only see two thirds of it on the screen. Councillor Gibson indicated that she was seeking a wide range of options. Um, the way I'll read it, there it, am I correct in reading if there's only two options proposed here or is it?
Oh, I'll read it to you councillor.
Okay.
Yes, the council receives a report at a future council meeting presenting information and options. For the potential inclusion of a councillor statement of commitment. Or a time of silent reflection in council meetings.
Thank you, so it's o- only two that would be considered. Um, I thought there might have been including where there's a four options, including the potential inclusion etcetera. Okay, I understand perfectly now, thank you very much for that.
Thank you councillor Middlemiss, councillor Lund, over to you.
Uh, thank you, um. My opposition is, we've already received a briefing. Um, and have a report with legal advice and an alternative options. That has alternative options on the matter as it relates to the use of the Lord's Prayer and an al- and alternative options. Should the group wish to explore that, it's unclear to me why we require another report to be prepared. Two reports on the same issue is not only excessive but it's completely unneeded. There's a difference between civil responsibilities and faith and as leaders we should respect that. A statement of commitment or prayer. Are no longer relevant to a religiously diverse society and is out of step with modern expectations of our role as councillors and best practice. Meeting procedures. Our council meeting procedures should reflect and be accountable to the community we serve. Our community is multicultural, multi faith and many in our community are also non religious. It's unclear to me how a statement of commitment supports our decision making at a council meeting. And we should also begin taking, sorry, we should also be taking into consideration who a prayer or a statement of commitment would exclude. I prefer that our resources are directed to focus on the critical challenges we face and the priorities we've identified previously. Such as transition advocacy, community health and wellbeing actions, infrastructure needs and sporting clubs, just to name a few.
Thank you councillor Lund, councillor Clancy.
Thank you madam mayor, I'm slowly working the iPad through and I do apologise for everyone staring at my forehead. Um, but uh this is something that I'm, I'm very happy to support, uh this notice of motion. Uh, I think that um and councillor Lund just talked in opposition around, you know, that we've received a report of. I think particularly that was around the Lord's Prayer and, and benchmarking what other sort of councils do. Gave us a bit of a snapshot and I think that this is the next step where we have to now move forward and, 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 you know, do something and. And I think a, a, a full report that sort of brings back what those options are. Um, rather than legal advice that got, got us to this point of having nothing. Uh, so I'm, I'm happy to, to support this notice of motion, I think that it's, it's good that we, we need to have a bit of a discussion about. What it does look like, is it a statement of support, is it a quiet time reflection, is it something that's multi? Um, you know, faith based, I mean, there's four thousand religions and faiths across the world, uh, you know, I, I don't know if we can. You know, take them all in turn, but it's something that, that's all encompassing of, of being able to. Uh, you know respectfully open a meeting um that, that, that has people who, who are of faith. Uh, as if they, they're sitting in a, in a moment that they can, they feel as if they can, they can make decisions, so I'm, I'm happy to support. Uh, a re- a report to be brought back presenting further information and that's what this uh notice of motion that councillor Gibson. Uh, has brought forward, so I'm happy to, to put my hand up and say yes on this one.
Thank you councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman.
Thanks madam mayor, I'm happy to support this on the grounds that um. We haven't been out to the community on our decision, I think it'd be great if we went out to the community on this and saw what they were after. Um, I do note at the M A V uh meeting, um the forum. That was held earlier this year, or middle of this year. Um, that the discussion on the Lord's Prayer actually came up and it was actually. Hume who led the charge against banning the Lord's Prayer because they actually. Have gone out to their community, found out every religion in their community and actually at before every meeting. Have a prayer from all the different, different communities on a monthly basis. Um, a lot of councils got up and said they find the statement of commitment takes in everybody. Um, they find it brings the council together, they also found it brings the community together. In, in understanding the decisions that councils making and the, 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 not the clarity i- is the um. Totally lost for words, the commitment that councils are making to a solid decision, that they've thought their decisions through. That they understand what they're making a decision about and they're reflecting on it, so I fully support it. As uh councillor Clancy stated, this is the next step and I think it's a great way forward, thank you.
Thank you councillor Harriman, councillor Middlemiss.
Thanks madam mayor, um I prefer a wider report rather than just two options. Um, I don't mind this report being done, I'll support it, but uh. Um, I believe there are a lot more options, a lot more views out there. Um, I think, I think this could have been wider and uh, but it said options including the next two, I would have been much happier, but look. I'm happy to receive a report back, um I'm certainly not indicating support for either option, but. Let's have a look at what comes out of it, thanks.
Thanks councillor Middlemiss, uh councillors, was there anyone else who wanted to take the option? No, uh councillor Lund has already spoken in opposition which gives councillor Gibson the opportunity to close if you would wish to take it.
Uh, thank you madam mayor, before I close, just a question and yes, I should know the answer. Um, just like I hope you know the answer, if I wish to put including in, um. It, can I do that because it hasn't gone to the vote or no?
Sorry, as in including in?
Um, what council middlemiss was saying, um.
Um. Um.
Because what, essentially what it's doing is not, not just putting it as two points, it's opening it up for. Um, a report on different.
So you're asking for interpretation, I think broadly council receives reported future and presenting information and options. I think options gives us a bit of room to move, I think if you're considerate of. Um, that level of flo- flexibility, I don't think is completely precludes it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it's, it's loose enough in the terminology to allow a level of flexibility if anyone wants to. Um, I argue the point, otherwise I'm, I'm happy to hear it.
Yeah.
Um. I, I don't, I can't see that it would exclude it and I, and I guess it's um. Yeah, because you do say potential inclusion. So you're making a suggestion to what may be there, you're not completely excluding any other opportunity. Um, just generally, does everyone feel comfortable with that approach? Think generally, I don't think anyone's having a, good on you Graham, raise the point.
It's his fault, it's his fault.
Tuesday meeting councillor Middlemiss, it'll be your fault, okay, um, yeah, I, I think as presented, it allows for some level of flexibility.
Yeah, thank you madam mayor, uh, look. I- in relation to this being another report, the other report, we can't. Take out to the community if we wish to take it out to the community for them to. Decide what is the best way they want us to do, we can't do that because it's confidential. We can't do anything about the um legal advice we've been given, it's confidential, we can't do that. So I'm looking for a report to come up with options, then if we wish to put it out to the community. And say, what do you want us to do, just like we do the acknowledgement for the traditional owners. Um, if I've got it right, we were asked to do that, um. And yeah, so that's what we were doing there and it's the same thing here. We're in their hands, what would you like us to do, thanks madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Gibson, councils, councillors, that was our close, so we will now put the notice of motion at twelve forward to the vote. Those in favour. Councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law, councillor Gibson, councillor Howe. Councillor Ferguson, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself, those against. Councillor Lund, the notice of motion is carried. Councillors, we move on to twelve point five. This is a transparency hub, this is another notice of motion, it commences on page four hundred and twenty. Of the agenda, a notice of motion brought by councillor Ferguson, so I note you councillor Ferguson as the mover. Do I have a second at councillors? Councillor Gibson is the second, do I have opposition councillors? Nope. Uh, councillor Ferguson, back to you.
Uh, thank you madam mayor, so I'm proposing a transparency hub on the Latrobe City website. Um, and obviously it outlines a bit more about it there on the screen. But I'd like to say there's several reasons why I think it's important um for councillors to present a transparency hub on the website for our residents. First of all, people are in general in modern life very time poor. So I'm thinking of people that haven't got a lot of time on their hands, but they still want to keep abreast of everything that's happening. So a transparency hub provides a centralised location where residents can easily access. Important information about council decisions, policies and actions. This is particularly crucial for individuals who may not have the time or resources to attend lengthy council meetings. Or sift through extensive documents. By making information readily available online. Councillors can ensure that residents can stay informed and engage in the decision making process. It prevents burying of facts, lengthy documents and meetings can sometimes make it difficult for residents to find specific information. Or important facts, by having a transparency hub, councillors can ensure that key information. Is not buried within lengthy documents or overshadowed in meetings, this promotes transparency by making it easier. For residents to find and understand the facts and details behind council decisions. It builds trust and accountability. Transparency is a fundamental aspect of good governance. By providing a transparency hub, councillors demonstrate their commitment to openness, accountability and public scrutiny. This helps build trust between residents and their elected representatives as it allows for greater visibility into the decision making process. And ensures that information is easily accessible to all. Can also encourage public participation. Overall, a transparency hub on the website of councillors, for councillors, is important to ensure that information is easily accessible. To time poor residents or tech um unsavvy residents as well. Uh, prevent the burying of facts, build trust and accountability and encourage public participation in dis- decision making process. There may be uh mentioned that it may cost, but all website development costs. Um, I think it's a worthy investment because one of the biggest thing I hear from our residents is they want transparency. And they want as much of it as they can get and know they get that real uh. Uh, benefit from their rates and I think this is a way of um us signalling to them that we really care about what they think and feel, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ferguson, councillor Gibson to speak or reserve?
Look, I, I, I think I'll reserve, please.
No problem, remind me if I forget, councillors, other speakers. Who else, councillor Harriman, you're up.
Thanks madam mayor, I think this is a really good idea, I think anything that helps. The community find information quicker, particularly to help with the transparency of council, we copper caning from the state government. And, and, and other, other agencies about uh, you know, how many items we have enclosed, we have two items enclosed and they. They, they think we're, we're um trying to take over the world. So I think having a site that not only the community but government departments could quite easily go and have a look and find out. Where uh council's got its information from, what it's decided to do, where it's spending its, its money. What councillors are up to, I think it's great and as a matter of, as councillor Ferguson said, as a matter of transparency. I think it's an excellent idea, um if we can make it a lot more accessible, it would be great. Um, so I'm quite happy to support it, I'm quite happy to have uh how I voted, uh information on my, my interests. Out there so, so people can find out and I'm quite, I'm more than happy for the background and information for council making decisions. And where we're spending our money to be out there as well, I think it's great.
Thank you councillor Harriman, councillor, councillor Lund.
Sorry, a little on my hand, thank you, um. Look, I, I'm probably going to vote for this, but I just wanna. Make a few points, the transparency hub, all the information highlighted to be included is already available on your, on our website. And it's available in our annual report, there's been no feedback that I know uh from. Community or anywhere else that requests or support a hub of this nature and I have not heard any concerns around a lack of transparency. In fact, the opposite. We already report on a number of the items then identified through our audit and risk committee who oversee our legal. Uh, le- uh legislation obligations and our reporting commitments. The audit and risk committee have recently presented their annual gen- uh their annual report to council highlighting there is a strong audit and risk culture. And reporting across the organisation in line with our obligations. The report is also available on the website. This project has not been identified as a priority uh by councillors in our council plan or in, or any of our recent annual budget. Discussions. The project also hasn't been discussed with councillors or officers and will direct resources away from our agreed strategic. Uh, projects, the potential cost um could be significant and is currently not budgeted for. And should be considered against other current community priorities. The benefits of proceeding with a hub have not been clearly identified or communicated. Um, and taking into consideration the majority of the information is already available on our website. Um, yeah, I, I'm just not quite sure where this transparency hub come uh from and um. What benefit it will bring us given, like I said, the information is already available.
Thank you councillor Lund, any other councillors wish to speak? No, on that basis councillor Gibson, you're reserved.
Okay, thanks madam mayor. Look, I'm sorry, I get a lot of people um say. Too often about transparency and complaining, so yeah, and. This actually is calling for a report, we're not spending. Thousands of dollars or anything else, it's just a report. And it's considering then what it may or may not cost. But we talk the talk a hell of a lot about, oh, trust us, we're accountable and transparency. Will this tick the box? No, I don't know, I'd like to see what the report says. But I will say now, um I T would be the first to say this. Um, and I won't shy away, I, to try and find things. Through the, the website to, um, it's not so easy for me. I would suggest there's councillors around this table that would have a, a better go of it than I do. But I would also say I'm not the worst out there, so uh can we have something that's easily accessible? Well, depends what the report says, I, I'm not saying yes, we will do this. But I am saying, yep, I agree to a, a report to come back. Giving us options and that's all it is, it's a report, so yeah, I'm happy to support that.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Uh, on the basis of that and there weren't any other speakers in regard to that, there wasn't any opposition. Um, there were some questions raised but no formal opposition and that's you don't get the option to close councillor Ferguson. Uh, but on the basis of the speakers we've had, we will put the motion to the vote. Those in favour. Councillor Middlemiss, councillor Law, councillor Lund, councillor Gibson, councillor Howe, councillor Ferguson, councillor Clancy, councillor Harriman and myself. That one is carried unanimously, thank you councillors. Item thirteen, these items are tabling and they're on um tonight, it does however bring us into item fourteen which is acknowledgements. Councillors, I am very much in your hands. If anyone would like to make an acknowledgement, uh councillors may raise an appropriate acknowledgement to recognise the achievements of individuals or groups or note the details, achievements or passing of a person who is associated with council or with the community at a council meeting. Does anyone have any formal igno- idea? Well, hands are up while I was reading. Councillor Harriman?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I hate to say I've got three tonight. It's been uh been a good month for Latrobe City. Um first off with netball, the Lavalakatholick College uh girls' netball team uh made it to the semi-finals of the National Marist Championship, uh unfortunately to unfortunately losing out to uh those rat bags from Wellington Sail Catholic College. As an old boy of Sail Catholic College, I can say that they do produce rat bags. But the good point out of that is we had two squads announced from that. Uh the All Australian squad included uh Emily Sculters from year eleven and Lara Noblet from year nine, both making the Australian team, which is fantastic. And the highly recommended squad, um Indiana De Dios, who's in year ten, also made that squad. So I'd just like to congratulate them on what is an outstanding achievement. Um I think probably expected that I was gonna make a basketball one tonight with Jack White uh joining his Denver Nugget compatriots in winning the N B A championship. Um so congratulations to Jack on that, having played fourteen games with the Nuggets. Um didn't get a lot of game time, but has impressed so much that uh Oklahoma City Thunder, uh which obviously has Josh Giddy and has just recruited Jack along with Patty Mills um to play for them. So congratulations to Jack. And I'd just like to acknowledge the timberworkers um who and supporters who had a rally today, uh turned out in their hundreds. Um from what I understand, great speakers, great event, um and came out in support of the native timber industry in Turaugan. So I just wanted to thank them as well.
Thank you, councillor Harriman. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my apology to um the family because this should have been done earlier. Um as you know, I was in hospital um and I wasn't um completely fit and healthy at the last norm now, nor at the last council meeting. So I I had to leave before the acknowledgements came up. Now, I want to do the acknowledgement for Jim Conigan. He was a former um scalawak, but a former mayor and councillor of the city of Moi. Now, he Jim was a character. There's no other way to to say it. He was a character. Um Scottish through and through. Now, he was passionate about his community and low be tired if you get in the way. He would tell you in no uncertain terms. But if he took your cause and he believed in in the cause like he did the community, you couldn't get finer. He was um they nearly broke the mould when he he was born. He was a hard taskmaster to hi- his family, I'll tell you. Um but his care and commitment to the community is something I think we should all aspire to. Um and sadly, he he passed um a little while ago and our community is a little bit poorer for it because of his passion for it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Um and just so that there aren't any bad feelings in relation to that, I did acknowledge um Mr Conigan's passing, the confidence asking um in your absence, but thank you for that more uh in-depth reflection. Uh councillors, any further acknowledgements you would like to bring at this point? Councillor Law?
Uh just uh it was a it was a really great event. It was on a very short notice, but the Moi Football Club, when they held their M N Day Day on the um long weekend, um councillor Gibson was there. Uh it was a, it was something that was put on in in the space of three or four weeks, raised over twenty odd thousand dollars, which is, which was a great, great thing. And what what amazes me, uh Ben's Day Football Club did exactly the same thing on the same day and raised over a hundred thousand dollars um for M N D. So, you know, there's some organisations out there that can go above and beyond in a very um, you know, short period of time and raise a lot of money. So yeah, with two Premier League clubs in their uh um, you know, football to raise over a hundred and twenty odd thousand dollars for M N D uh in in a day was fantastic. So, you know, both clubs de- deserved, even though Ben's house not in Latrobe City, but the Real League was a phenomenal effort. Thanks very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Law. Councillors, any further acknowledgements at this point? No, okay, I'm gonna keep moving. We move on to item fifteen. This is a meeting code to the public to consider confidential information commencing on four twenty five of the agenda. Do I have a move please? Councillor Middlemiss, uh councillor Harriman seconding, any opposition? Opposition to that one. And so that will officially close this part of the agenda out at ten thirty two P M. Uh it does conclude our open session of tonight's council meeting with our closing to consider confidential business items. Thank you to those of us who've joined us by live stream uh and stayed with us. Um it has been a lengthy meeting, um we explored a number of things in detail and we hope that you can join us again into the future. Uh councillors, if you can stay with us uh for a short while and to everyone else who's leaving us at this point, uh thank you and good evening.